Welcome, everyone. And now call this meeting of the Somerville City Council to order. In accordance with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the City Council may be conducted via remote participation. Please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website and be available for future review. We know tensions are high this evening, and we have an entire agenda ahead of us. Let me be very clear: hate speech of any kind will not be tolerated in this room. Because we are at capacity, I'm going to remind us of a few things. In the event of an emergency that requires evacuation, please remain calm and exit the building immediately through the nearest exit. The exits from this room are marked by lighted exit signs and are located behind me and behind both of all of you in this room. Do not use the elevator during an emergency evacuation. If you cannot use the stairs due to a disability or limited mobility, move to the designated evacuation assistance area located at the center staircase on each floor of City Hall and wait for help from emergency responders. Once outside, please move to the designated evacuation gathering point in the grassy area between the parking lot and Highland Ave, closest to the high school. To facilitate a safe and timely evacuation, it is required that all available exit paths, including aisles, hallways, doorways, staircases, and fire escapes, are clear of obstruction at all times, including objects or people. We appreciate your understanding and cooperation. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call. Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Said.
Here.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Here.
With all counselors present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, clerk. Pursuant to our Rule 32, let it be known that this City Council salutes the flag of the United States of America, and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We'll begin this meeting with a moment of silence, and I will start us off. As you all know and have heard by now, a member of our community was detained and taken from Ward Seven, tough student Rumessa Ozturk. She was grabbed out the streets of our city by ICE agents. She's now gone from our community in Louisiana, and we know together as a community that this action undermines our very values of justice, of fairness, and free speech. So I wanted to take a moment to honor her and honor a moment of silence, and I will invite counselors who wish to speak on this as well. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Madam President. It is extremely hard to find the words to describe how furious, how just full of rage I am. I think that everyone in this community is. I cannot imagine what Rumessa and her family and her friends must be going through, the sheer terror. For folks who have not seen the video of her being snatched by these Gestapo thugs on the street from our federal government. This was a person walking down the street a few nights ago in Somerville, surrounded by a group of masked thugs, charged with no crime whatsoever, snatched off the street, flown thousands of miles away, away from her lawyer, away from her family, her friends, her community, in an ICE facility, announced that they were canceling her visa, no legal process, kidnapped off the street. Today, the Secretary of State was on television saying, "Oh, we've done this to over 300 people. If I see a lunatic, we're canceling the visa." And we know why this was done. It was because she wrote an op-ed in the Tuft newspaper, where she is a Fulbright scholar, an op-ed in support of Palestine. This is absolute core free speech. What has happened to her is textbook authoritarianism, depriving people of their basic rights, their freedom, because the President of the United States doesn't like what they have to say. It sounds like a hypothetical worst-case scenario, and it is happening in Somerville and in cities across the country. I am incredibly proud of the huge turnout on a moment's notice in Somerville and Powderhouse Square last night, sending a very clear message that Somerville is not backing down, that we're supporting each other. I'm glad to see our members of Congress, senators, speaking up in very clear terms about what this is, and I want everyone to know that we will do everything in our power to make sure that this atrocity and similar stories that, I think, have not maybe hit the media stays front of mind, and that this cannot stand.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, Madam President, I'm going to exercise restraint here and not use the kind of language that I really want to use when discussing this, since we have some young members of our community here. I can't believe we're sitting here talking about masked federal agents snatching someone with a valid student visa off of our streets for the alleged crime of publishing an op-ed on foreign affairs that the Trump regime didn't like. This is something out of a movie set in a dystopian future, but apparently it's our reality now here in America. What a time to be alive. If you're someone who's sitting there feeling like, "No, this is fine," because you disagree with Rumessa on foreign policy, I just ask you to imagine what if it were the other way around? How would you feel if she had criticized Palestinian authorities and a federal government hostile of that viewpoint had decided to take her away? This is absolutely un-American. It's a total affront to our country's basic principles around free speech and just the order of law, and it sets a really chilling precedent, and we need everyone standing up to this and speaking out against it. If you're not outraged, you're not paying attention.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you through the chair. I'll be brief as well, or I'll try to. Didn't prepare any statements on this, but I just think it's really, really important that we speak about the fact that a union worker in our community, someone who was pursuing her PhD and was so close after so many years of pursuing that education so that she could give back to her community, our community, was kidnapped by the federal government in broad daylight because she exercised her First Amendment rights, just like any immigrants and any person within the United States has the right to do. It does not surprise me that she is the latest in a increasingly long line of organizers, activists, scholars who've spoken out on Palestine and been punished for it by universities, by the federal government. And I think it's really important that we look at the kind of person that she is, someone who is a bright star in our community and someone who I fervently hope that we pursue every possible avenue to bring back to this community, and recognize that when people talk about those who support the people of Gaza, the people of the West Bank, and use terms like terrorists or, in some cases, much worse language, that's who they're talking about. They're talking about people like her. They're talking about the people outside this hall. They're talking about some of the people in this hall. Frankly, they may be talking about some of the people around this dais. And it is incredibly important to me to just point out that free speech around calling out apartheid and genocide is the free speech movement of our time. It is so incredibly important that we understand the connections between how the federal government has attacked this person, who is connected to so many different movements and so many different areas of research, and how if they can do that to her, they can do it to any legal immigrant that they disagree with, and they can do it to natural-born citizens. You know, I'm a fan of history. I've paid attention to it, and one of the things about mass deportations is that, as the so-called borders czar said, there are collaterals. There are always, and there always have been in the United States. When our federal government seeks to push out people because of their race, ethnicity, religion, political views, there are always people who are swept up in that who are the unintended consequences: citizens, legal immigrants, people of color. And I just want to say that my heart is with her right now. I can't imagine what she's experiencing in Louisiana right now, and I fervently hope that we can actually bring her back to this community and celebrate with her in this chamber and out in Somerville. Thank you.
Counselor Mbah and Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. I also want to echo my colleague's sentiment. I watched this video last night, and I was really frozen in time after, you know, I came from the rally. I think this is just simply free speech, and it doesn't matter if you agree with her opinion or not. It's just, I don't see, there's no reason, nothing humanly possible, that this should be happening in this day and age. And I want to stand in solidarity to demand her release immediately, and I think that those with more power than us should be drumming, screaming at the rooftop, going to court, demanding her release, and not just talking about, you know, her getting out or monitoring the situation or giving updates. She needs to be out immediately. Thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to sign on to this, if it's something to sign on to. Agree with everything my colleagues say. I just want to also point out, this was not the only abduction in Somerville this week. I had someone abducted a block away from my house. I won't share the name because their family is still living in fear, and also because it's people who know what few rights they have in this country, that already know that they have to watch their speech and they have to be careful about where they go and what they say and they do. Everyone is being impacted by this now, and I hope, you know, tonight, we're going to talk a lot about it, but I think I was very impressed yesterday about the solidarity that everyone has towards all people being affected by this, and that's all I just want to say, is that this is affecting the entire community and this entire country.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for bringing this up as a moment of silence, and thank you, my colleagues, for speaking on it so eloquently and saying, you know, everything. So with the, you know, not want to be repetitive on this, I just want to, I also want, but I want to echo what Counselor McLaughlin said, you know. I had constituents reach out to me who wanted to attend the rally but were afraid to for their own status as immigrants, and, you know, we are living in scary times. I mean, this was terrifying to watch this woman be taken away, but zero markings of actual police besides a badge hanging, you know, let alone the fact that they identify themselves as police and not as ICE agents, federal agents. They are not police, and they are not welcome in this city. And I just want to say that I, you know, I stand with the folks who are here this evening to stand with that individual, Ressa, and I just want to say that, you know, my thoughts are with her and her family as well. Thank you.
Any other moments of silence? Counselor Said.
Thank you, Madam President, for allowing us to speak to this. I will start by saying that I'm very proud of our community for showing up yesterday in solidarity, and as Counselor Ewan Campen said, there are just like no words to describe how we're feeling right now. I just will say that everyone should be feeling outraged because this is just horrifying, and I will say in Ward Five, it is not the only abduction that happened this past week. I have a lot of neighbors who have reached out, feeling very fearful. So, yeah, let's do everything as a city and as a body to make sure our neighbors feel safe.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I hadn't planned to speak on this, and I appreciate all my colleagues, but Counselor McLaughlin is 100% right. This is throughout our city, Ward Five, Ward One, Ward Two, and it's accelerating. The first abduction started happening a few weeks ago. This acceleration is something that concerns me greatly, and I don't think it will be sufficient for us to simply demand that our people are returned after they've been taken and shipped either out of state or even out of the country. I think it's important that each of us, each of us now, in thinking about those neighbors, recognize that these are avoidable and preventable losses if we come together to protect our neighbors and keep each other safe. I know that's what I am focused on, and that's what I hope my neighbors are focused on as well. Thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Hi, Madam President. Counselor Scott did remind me of something, actually, though, because I did want to mention. I'll be mentioning in my Public Health and Safety Committee report later, ways to help people in trouble, but if people aren't around for that. People, we're looking for lawyers, people willing to volunteer their time to help in this community, and if you're not a lawyer, they're looking for accredited representatives, people who can be witnesses to these things and are trained to deal with situations like this. You can contact the Office, Somerville Office of Immigrant Affairs, SOYA, for more information on that.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other moments of silence? Will everyone in the chamber who is able please rise for a moment of silence? You may be seated. We have a number of items we are taking out of order this evening. We are going to start with 5.1, then followed by 4.13, then we'll take a committee report out of Order 6B, which is the Committee on Finance, then we'll take 9.36 out of order, and finally, 8.4, which is the presentation on the disparity study, which I know many of you are looking forward to. With that, Madam Clerk, will you read the next item?
The next item is Item 1.3, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of February 27th, 2025.
Seeing no opposition, those minutes are approved. Next item. Oh, let's lay them on the table. Right, we have Counselor Davis on Zoom this evening.
Item 2.1 is a citation by Counselor Pineda Newfeld, commending the Somerville Homeless Coalition on their 40th anniversary of supporting our community.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have the citation? I'd like to read it one moment. So while we're getting the citation, some of you know that this evening, our amazing community partners, the Somerville Homeless Coalition, are celebrating 40 years. So they couldn't be here tonight because they're at their event celebrating this important milestone. Thank you. So I just wanted to read it out loud. I'm going to encourage them to watch this video, so if any of my colleagues want to share their words for the Somerville Homeless Coalition, you're welcome to. Citation: Be it hereby known to all that the Somerville City Council and the mayor offer their sincerest commendations to the Somerville Homeless Coalition on their 40th anniversary of providing support and shelter to the city's most vulnerable populations. They continue to be a beacon of hope for many through their advocacy, support, and service. The City Council and the mayor extend their deepest gratitude to the staff for their dedication to ending homelessness. So thank you again to the Somerville Homeless Coalition. Congratulations on 40 years. May they continue to serve our community the way they have, and if anyone wants to offer any additional words, you're welcome to now. Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through the chair, at the risk of annoying my colleagues too early in the meeting by talking longer than I need to, I just want to really give my wholehearted appreciation to Michael Libby, who is Executive Director of the Somerville Homeless Coalition and who has done just fantastic work and has run into so many roadblocks in his mission to support members of our community who are in the most vulnerable position you can be in. And we will be discussing at some point various budget priorities across this council, and having read through my colleagues, I know that there are a number of us who've included as one priority additional funds for supportive housing and for supports for this impacted community, and I just want to conjoin the message of support from our community symbolically with a material support. We certainly, absolutely, must do more as a city to build the kind of infrastructure necessary to actually house our people, to make people, to give people an opportunity to get off the streets and to have a holistic and healthy life. And I look forward to continuing to do that work with my colleagues and hope that our FY26 budget reflects that goal.
Okay, great. Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item. Oh, Counselor Mbah, I'm sorry if you're in my...
No, no worries. No, I just want to share the sentiment of my colleague to say thank you, Michael, for your work. Just to add that there's a gentleman on Dover Street that I want to see that gentleman housed, so do everything you can in your power to, you know, make that happen, and whatever thing you need from us, let us know. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 3.1 is a grant of location from Eversource to install approximately 106 feet of conduit in Bedford Street from utility pole 316 over one to utility pole 25 over one.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Jackie Duffy, welcome.
Hi, who are you tonight?
Great, how are you?
Good, thank you. We'd like to install 106 feet of conduit in Bedford Street. This is to remove an aerial crossing over 1620 Medford Street.
Anyone else here to speak on this item? Any other hands, Madam Clerk? Okay, I declare this public hearing closed. Any counselors wish to speak? Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair, or Madam President. As a Ward Two counselor, I've reviewed this. I'm not sure why these are two separate grants of location necessarily, but anytime we can put these wires underground, it's just fine. As usual, the usual conditions apply for having a traffic management plan for the work because it's right in the right of way, but I think this and the next one can be approved. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak on this item? This item then is approved. Next item, Madam Clerk. Let's lay it on the table for approval. Thank you.
Item 3.2 is a grant of location from Eversource to install 33 feet of conduit in Bedford Street from utility pole 316 over one to a point of pickup at 10 Bedford Street.
I declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Jackie Duffy.
Jackie Duffy. Eversource would like to install 33 feet of conduit in Bedford Street to supply electric service to 10 Bedford Street. The reason why they're on two different work audits is because the city asked us to.
God bless, Jackie. Thanks.
Anyone else here to speak on this item? Any hands, Madam Clerk? Okay, I now declare this public hearing closed. Any counselors who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll lay this item on the table for approval at the end of the meeting. Next item.
That's going to bring us to the first item we'll take out of order, which is Item 5.1, a resolution by counselors Wilson and Klingon declaring the month of March 2025 as National Social Work Month.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, as the son of a social worker and someone who understands the immense value of social workers in our society, I thought it was important to observe National Social Work Month this month here in Somerville. I remember when my kids did their Community Helpers Unit back in kindergarten, reflecting on the people who choose to dedicate their lives to being there for their communities. That's social work in a nutshell. Social workers are there for our community as individuals, families, the community as a whole, whether it's connecting someone with resources or providing counseling or advocacy for those who need it. Social workers look out for us. To do this, they enter volatile situations sometimes, deal with people going through terrible traumatic circumstances, and they're definitely not doing this for the money, as we as a society consistently fail to compensate them accordingly for the work that they're doing for us. So I think it's important that we at least take a moment to hold up social workers and give them the recognition that they deserve for all that they're doing for us. So, Madam President, I'd like to sponsor a speaker who knows firsthand what social workers go through and what they mean to our community, Marianne Wallace.
Marianne Wallace, welcome.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Wilson and Counselor Klingon, for bringing forth this resolution. This March is Social Worker Appreciation Month. I've been a social worker for more than 26 years, and this is the first time the City of Somerville has actually recognized the hard work that all social workers do. I do child protection social work and deal with families in crisis, but our city has so many great social workers that work with families and children, individual therapists, our school social workers, our social workers that work with our elders, there are our social workers that work with substance abuse, there are social workers that work with our homeless population. Somerville has an adolescent ward here that treat traumatized children, and it's important to recognize the hard work. It's also important to recognize the secondary trauma that social workers experience on a routine basis. Social workers deal with people's trauma and often don't get the same support that they're providing to their clients. It's also important to remember that social workers are working seven days a week, 24 hours a day, to ensure that people are safe in our communities across the state and across the country. So I want to say again how much I appreciate the City Council for bringing this resolution forward and recognizing social workers.
Thank you. I know we have Counselor Klingon who wants to speak on this.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Yeah, pleasure to bring this forward with my colleague at large. You know, some of you have probably heard me talk about social workers before, as my mother was a DCF foster parent, DSS, back then at the time, for many years, and I got to see up close and personal the ins and outs and day-to-day of being a social worker, just the amount of care they put into their job, and really, I would like to emphasize what Marianne Wallace just said, the trauma that they endure themselves. You know, I've been privy to, you know, just growing up the way I did in Section Eight, I've been privy to a lot of stuff, and actually, I remember there was times actually you'd be like, "Oh, the social worker's going to come take the kids," you know? You know, it's like police for us back then, you know? But, man, you know, when children are being abused, DSS is at the door, DCF is at the door, and doing their job, and it is dangerous, and it is very risky work, but they do it because they care about children and they keep children safe, and that is something that they do every day, and not just, you know, like you said, social workers in all capacities, but certainly I have affinity for social workers. In my day job, I work for the state, and I service all of the social workers' IT needs, and let me tell you, they're meeting in McDonald's, they're doing home visits, they're doing family visits, they're on the side of the highway trying to get into their email. I mean, these people are road warriors, and they are just, you know, the epitome of what it means to be a public servant. So I'm happy to be here this evening honoring those fine men, women, and everybody, and anybody who is wearing the badge of social worker. Thank you.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I just fully support this. Thank you for bringing it, and want to echo that it is the heart of the individual social worker, in addition to the training that they've undergone, that makes them important and special, not just in the lives of the individuals that they work with and that they touch, but in the systems that they continually work to change. These are hard times... These are hard times and getting harder, and the more support that we can offer, especially to the helpers, to those who are offering support to others, the better off I think we all are. So thank you for this and with gratitude.
Yes, thank you. We'll lay that on the table for approval. Madam Clerk, next item.
The next item that the council will be taking out of order is item 4.13, a resolution by Councilors Klingon and Scott calling for justice, transparency, and renewed investigative efforts into the unsolved murders of Deanna Kremen, Charlene Rosemond, and other victims in Somerville. And I haven't asked to read the resolution in its entirety, so let me pull it up on the screen here quickly, as quickly as I can anyway. Whereas the city of Somerville is committed to justice, public safety, and supporting the families of victims of violent crime; and whereas the unsolved murders of Deanna Kremen and Charlene Rosemond remain a source of pain and injustice for their families, friends, and the broader Somerville community; and whereas Deanna Kremen, a 17-year-old Somerville resident, was tragically murdered in 1995, and despite investigative efforts, her case remains unsolved; and whereas Charlene Rosemond was brutally murdered in Somerville in 2009, and her case also remains unsolved, leaving lingering questions and a lack of closure for her loved ones; and whereas unresolved homicides have a lasting impact on victims' families and can undermine public trust in law enforcement and the justice system; and whereas advances in forensic science, DNA analysis, and investigative techniques present renewed opportunities to solve longstanding cold cases; and whereas collaboration between the Somerville Police Department, the Middlesex District Attorney's Office, the Massachusetts State Police, and federal agencies such as the FBI can enhance investigative efforts and bring fresh attention to these cases; and whereas community engagement, including monetary rewards, public awareness campaigns, and anonymous tip lines can play a critical role in generating new leads and encouraging witnesses to come forward. Now therefore be it resolved that the Somerville City Council urges the Middlesex District Attorney's Office and the Massachusetts State Police to renew investigative efforts into the unsolved murders of Deanna Kremen, Charlene Rosemond, and other victims, utilizing all available modern forensic and investigative resources. And be it further resolved that the city council calls on the Middlesex District Attorney's Office for a public update on the status of these cases while respecting the confidentiality of active investigations, to reaffirm the commitment to justice and transparency; and be it further resolved that the city council supports increased efforts on solving these and all other unsolved murders in Somerville; and be it further resolved that the city of Somerville stands in solidarity with the families of Deanna Kremen, Charlene Rosemond, and all victims of unsolved homicides, committing to advocating for justice, closure, and accountability; and be it further resolved that the city clerks shall send a copy of this resolution to the Middlesex District Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know Counselor Wilson would like to sign on. Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President, through you, colleagues, and members of our Somerville community. Myself and Counselor Scott bring forth this resolution this evening to address a profound and lingering injustice, one that lingers over my ward as well as his, but as, over our entire city as well and our community. So the unsolved murders of Deanna Kremen and Charlene Rosemond I'm speaking of, as we mark the 30th anniversary of Deanna's tragic death and we approach the 16th year since Charlene was taken from us, our hearts remain heavy and our resolve unwavering. Deanna Kremen was a 17-year-old vibrant young woman full of promise and kindness. On March 30, 1995, just days after her 17th birthday, she was found behind a senior housing complex near her home, having been cruelly discarded. Her aspirations of nurturing young minds as a preschool teacher cut short. Despite the passage of time, her family and friends and community continue to seek justice for Deanna. Similarly, Charlene Rosemond, a 23-year-old Somerville High graduate, was a beacon of ambition and warmth. On April 13, 2009, after being reported missing for several days, she was discovered in her father's car in Somerville, having been shot to death during a robbery while trying to purchase herself a car to get to her job every day. Charlene's, Charlene's dreams and love she shared with her family were stolen in an act of senseless violence. Her loved ones remain steadfast in their quest for answers. Excuse me, Madam President. These tragedies have left indelible scars on our community. The families of Deanna and Charlene have endured years of pain and uncertainty compounded by the absence of accountability for those heinous acts. As a city, we cannot allow these cases to fade into the background of history. We owe it to Deanna, Charlene, their families, and ourselves to persist the pursuit of justice. In recognition of this solemn responsibility, we are introducing this resolution calling upon the Middlesex District Attorney's Office and the Massachusetts State Police to renew and intensify their investigative efforts into these unsolved murders. And I want to be clear, I'm not saying that the DA's office and the law enforcement agencies, including SPD, haven't done a heck of a lot. And I know there are other unsolved murders outside of Somerville. But these are our people. These were Somerville kids, and I need to make sure that we're not just sitting around waiting for somebody to confess. We need to be a squeaky wheel, and we need to make sure that everything is being done because it's easy for the passage of time to forget. So we implore anyone with information, no matter how seemingly insignificant, to come forward. The passage of time does not diminish the value of truth, the value of these lives. Your courage could be the key to unlocking long-awaited justice for Deanna and Charlene. So let us stand united in our commitment to these families and reaffirm our dedication to our community where safety, justice, and compassion prevail. Together, we can ensure that Deanna and Charlene are never forgotten and that their stories propel us towards a future where such tragedies are no more. So thank you for indulging me in that, Madam President and colleagues. I am prepared this evening to sponsor members of both Deanna's family and Charlene's family with your approval, of course. I do want to say that we did receive a communication from the Middlesex District Attorney's Office regarding this item, and the district attorney has said that she has requested to appear before us at the April 9 meeting to give an update, obviously, as was said, within, you know, the guidelines of not giving, you know, sharing information that shouldn't be shared with the public. But I do want to say one thing, you know, at one point, I was prepared to just ask families and ask, you know, if we just wanted to ask them to just open the case file, let the case file become public so that people outside, you know, that have time, that, you know, let the web do its thing, whatever the case may be, because at this point, you know, we're at 30 years. Many of her family and friends, you know, we won't be around forever. And so, you know, yeah, it's kind of like, well, what do we have to lose? But I didn't do that. And, you know, hopefully that with the attention that this will bring, that we can, we can bring something forward. But I just, I really did that out of frustration because, you know, in the, in the communication from the DA, it mentions this cold case squad. And I distinctly remember in 2019, while on this council, Adam asked for Deanna, as we have every year, and there will be one this Sunday, the 30th, on the anniversary at 10:15 at St. Anne's, that, oh, there's a cold case squad, but Deanna's case and also Charlene's case, as I've since learned, talked to her sister, are not part of it because those are active investigations. And that's a really frustrating thing to hear. So, you know, I'm glad, I don't, I'm curious and I'm hopeful to hear what the DA has to say. As I said, this isn't a ding on anybody, it's just we have to continue to be the squeaky wheel for Deanna and for Charlene. And so with that, I ask, first we'll bring up Deanna's aunt Sandy. Sandy, Sandy, just, would you like to come up and say a few words? I just want to say for the record, oh, sorry. Over here. Before Sandy goes on, I just want to say that Deanna's mom, Catherine, she felt, she's not able to make it this evening for health reasons, and so I, but Deanna's aunt and cousin, Alan, are here, as well as I'm sure some friends, if they're able to get in this evening. Friends and family are here somewhere, I hope. With that, Madam President, thank you. So Sandy, just say your name and where you're from and...
Sandra Colley.
Sandy, before you do that, Madam Clerk, do you want to amend this?
Madam President, thank you. I just wanted to correct for the record that this item is sponsored by Councilors Klingon, Scott, Wilson, Davis, Ba, McGlaughlin, Strezzo, and Pineda Newfeldt.
Sandy, please, welcome.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the Somerville Police for everything they have done since this all happened 30 years ago. However, I have reached out to the DA's office. They will not respond to me. We've been to the FBI, my brother, her father, Albert Rogers. They told us it's not a cold case after, we were told by the DA years ago in 19, it was going to be one. We've met with the Somerville Police. They can't do anything without the DA. So this is where we're at, nowhere. This is how my family feels. Jesse's right, what he said, they need to open the file. We would like this DNA to be sent to Texas where it, where other murders have been solved. I don't know what's going on with the DNA. Supposedly, it's so little, they don't want to lose it. Well, they can take so little and multiply that there. So we're at a standstill. It's been a long time. It's been a lot of my family. It's too much. We just can't do this anymore. It's just too much on us. Somebody's got to know something. My biggest question is, why hasn't it been sent there? Why? That company's been in business for the last five years, and this is ridiculous. My other question is to her boyfriend, Tommy LeBlanc. If you're innocent, why have you never ever once helped us try to find who did it? If you loved her so much? That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wilson, Klingon.
Madam President, thank you. And I'd like to sponsor Rosaleen Rosemond to come on up. This is Charlene's sister. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just want to say I'm Rosalee Rosemond, the younger sister of Charlene Rosemond. Charlene and I grew up in Somerville during our adolescent and teenage years. We both attended Somerville High School. She graduated from Somerville High. We used to be so proud of being from Somerville. But unfortunately, in April of 2009, she was murdered in the very city that she was proud to be from. And April of this year will mark 16 years that my family and I have been without my sister, and her murder still remains unsolved. We do feel like it's a solvable case. We do feel like people within the community know what's happening. I do think Somerville had, Somerville Police Department as well as the state police has attempted to find some answers for us. However, I don't know how much effort they've put in throughout the years, same as Deanna's case. I assumed that she would have been a part of the cold case unit, but when I had reached out, they said that her case wasn't a part of the cold case unit, which being that at the time, it was about 10 years. I don't know what's considered a cold case, but to me, if it's unsolved, I would consider that a cold case. My family and I feel like the answers are there. It's just a matter of, are we seeking enough answers from the community and from the directions that we need to? And when I, when I say, are we seeking, I'm speaking on the state police, the Middlesex DA's office, and we just hope that we will one day get justice for my sister. It's been 16 years. Each year that passes, we, we hope this is the year that we'll get justice, but it's another year of unanswered questions. It's another year of no one being held accountable for her murder. And not only has it devastated my parents and I as they age, I pray that they are here to see the justice for my sister. I, I will be here. I would love to see it, but again, they're aging, and I want them to be able to sit in the courtroom and look at the people or the person that took my sister's life and be able to get that closure. So I just hope that one day we'll be able to get that, and I hope the Middlesex DA's office, the state police, the Somerville Police Department, as well as the community, can help my family find the closure for my sister.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor.
So thank you to our speakers, and I don't know, Alan, did you want to come up or anybody Thank you for the colleagues who signed on. As I said, there'll be a mass for Deanna at St. Anne's, 10:15 this Sunday, the 30th, excuse me, and a walk afterwards to the square, Deanna Kremen Square. And I just, you know, I'm thankful that the DA responded so quickly to us as elected officials. It doesn't sound like that's always the case with family, so hopefully when the DA comes before us, again, maybe some questions will get answered as to whatever they can answer within, within the bounds. So I just want to thank our speakers for coming this evening, and, you know, we will never forget your loved ones. And that is all, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor, for bringing this. Counselor Burnley and you and Campan would like to sign on as well. And I just want to say thank you to the families for being here. I know it's hard to be here, hard to be here in a crowded room, but we really appreciate it and appreciate my colleague for bringing this up for the council. Any other colleagues wish to speak on this? Okay. Thank you, Counselor. We'll lay this on the table for approval. Next item.
The next item is going to be item 6B, a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on March 25, 2025.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, Finance Committee met on Tuesday, March 25 with all five members present. We took up a 12-item agenda over an hour and 37-minute meeting. We unanimously recommended that you approve tonight a $35,000 appropriation to fund the Senior Taxi Transportation Program. It's proven very popular. A time-only extension of the contract for the designer of the Healy Schoolyard Project. A $72.24 prior year invoice for racial and social justice. A $3,090 prior invoice for Parks and Rec. An amendment to the salary ordinance for non-union positions and the $923,000 appropriation that funded that. By a four-to-one vote, we recommended that you approve tonight a $42,000 grant for police safety equipment. And by a split three-two vote, we also recommended that you approve an appropriation for $160,000 for multipurpose flooring at Founder's Rink. This one generated a lengthy discussion due to the impact on our ability to put down an ice sheet in the winter months for the foreseeable future if we were to move forward with this. I'll move to sever this item with the goal of having it sent back to committee for additional discussion. I have to believe there's a good solution out there that would allow us to make year-round use of this facility, so I've asked Commissioner Lathan of Public Works to present to the committee at our next meeting on the challenges that we're facing of year-round use of founders so that we can get all the information on it. We also then marked, as work completed, two items of Counselor Burnley's regarding community impact fee and how we might use revenues from short-term rentals. So with that, I ask that this committee report be accepted as submitted.
And I believe we need a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Let's first take a roll call on the motion to sever item 25-0456 from the Finance Committee report on that item. Counselor Ba.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
I.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon. Counselor Davis. Counselor Davis, turn on the time. Counselor Davis, again?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And Counselor Pineda Newfeldt.
Yes.
With 10 councilors in favor and one absent, that motion is approved, and that item is now before the council.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, with item 6B before us, I'd like to sponsor a member of the public to speak. Ruth Foreman is the Vice President of Somerville Youth Hockey Association and a Somerville resident.
Ruth, welcome. Thank you, Counselor Wilson, for sponsoring us, and thank you to the city council. My name is Ruth Foreman, and I have lived in Somerville for 18 years. I am here representing the Somerville Youth Hockey Association, where I serve as Vice President on the Board of Directors. We are urging the city to restore a winter ice sheet to Founder's Rink. Loss of Founder's Ice this past year has been directly detrimental to our youth programming. For as many years, nine, as my family has been involved with Somerville Youth Hockey, it has utilized founders for practices and clinics during the season. Additional programming and community-building opportunities had to be canceled this year due to... due to lack of availability at Founder's. Importantly, a Mites that's under age eight, jamboree which took two years of planning to put together, had to be canceled this year due to an absence of notice regarding the Founder's closure. This jamboree was meant to be a showcase for Somerville's youngest skaters to have fun and compete against programs from surrounding communities. Programming that targets and supports teens and pre-teens, teaching them to skate and learn to play hockey, had to be reduced to once-a-week sessions as they had been previously offered at Founder's. Winter, specifically during the high school hockey season, represents the busiest and most competitive time for ice. This season, we lost up to four hours per week of ice time over three months. If Founder's had been available, we may have been able to recoup some of that practice time and be able to provide consistent practice times or not cancel programs, such as our weekly goalie clinics that are offered at no additional cost to our players. For the past several years, Somerville Youth Hockey has increased its recruitment and retention efforts to target girls and low-income families. We've identified these groups within the community as an equity priority, offering skating and hockey to groups that the sport has typically overlooked. Events such as girls-only hockey used to be offered more consistently when Founder's was available, but were reduced to just two events this past season due to not having additional ice time available to support special programming. The greatest proportion of families requiring financial assistance participate in our organization's Learn to Play 9+ program. This program targets and supports teens and pre-teens, teaching them to skate and learn to play hockey. It has also been reduced to once-a-week sessions as they had been previously offered at Founder's. While I am here representing a town hockey program, I would be remiss not to point out the public recreation benefits of the Founder's winter ice sheet. It is not just hockey that we're talking about. It includes free skates, figure skating, learn-to-skate programs, and other activities like curling. These types of activities are for our entire Somerville community and are severely limited in the winter if only Veterans Rink is available. Somerville Youth Hockey fully supports multifunctional use of Founder's and has always encouraged our skaters to play and be involved in other sports. But use of Founder's should not come at the expense of winter ice sports. Rather, it should be in addition. We urge equitable use of the Founder's Rink, and we call on the city to restore a winter ice sheet. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. I want to thank our community members here for being with us. It's good to see such a great turnout here. The conversation in committee and ones I've continued to have subsequent to that meeting on Tuesday night, you know, have really centered around how do we, how do we make this an "and" not an "or"? How do we make sure that we are doing winter programming there, in fall, summer, spring programming as well? How are we using this facility 12 months out of the year? There's got to be a way. So that's why I want to see this go back to committee. I'm confident we can have a good discussion in committee about this, and I just have to think there's a solution out there. So I'll move to send the item back to the Finance Committee.
Okay. On that motion, we have some counselors who want to speak on this as well. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, as the ward counselor for the area with the rinks in it, I just want to thank folks for showing up tonight. Man, there's a long history of fights about the use of Conway and the use of those facilities, the use of all of our rec facilities. I'm old enough that in my first set of fights about Conway Park, I didn't mean by reading glasses back then. Here I am now, and I definitely do. But I appreciate my colleague for continuing to push on what's really a matter of policy, right? I have seen, I have lost as many of those fights as I've won over the years, probably more of them. But always, my emphasis has been on trying to make sure that we make sound decisions and that the course can be changed. So I appreciate some of the thought that's gone into their proposal, but frankly, I've pulled up floors before. It's a labor cost. It's a storage problem. It's a challenge, not something unsolvable. So I urge the administration, I'm glad to hear that they're coming back for a conversation. Ultimately, even if this funding were to be rejected, it would just go into the budget for our next fiscal year. At least, that's what has happened in the past. That was the Kurti Tony administration, a little bit different then. But it's my hope that rather than just see this as a temporary roadblock that can be pushed through, I hope the administration does come forward in a real spirit of problem-solving. Man, it is one of those fights that's, sometimes, with as many fights as we have in the world, it's hard to pick which ones. I thank you for showing up tonight and letting us know that we're not in this fight alone. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Counselor Ewan Campen, Klingon, McGlaughlin, and Davis in that order. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Madam President. So I think, you know, for folks at home who are not familiar with the situation, first of all, I want to give a huge thank you to everyone who's here tonight and all the people who reached out over the last week to kind of bring all of us up to speed with the situation. I think it might sound complicated, but basically, there are two ice rinks in the city. Founder's Memorial right next to each other, right? And the administration recently announced that they would like to turn Founder's Rink into a rec center during the rest of the year for great things, right? The description of stuff that the administration is proposing doing sounds wonderful, you know, all-ages yoga classes, Zumba, pickleball. It's something that all of us obviously support. The issue is, once this came before the Finance Committee, that the proposal was to put down flooring that is incompatible with then taking it up over the winter and putting it on the ice. So that's the question that's before the council now, is for all that stuff that we love, the year-round rec center, do we want to get rid of 50% of the ice in the city permanently, basically? I am certainly not ready for that. That's for sure. I mean, I'm very glad that this is going back to committee and not coming to a vote because I don't think that vote would go well tonight for the plan. I am nowhere near convinced that this is the only option. So I am very, very, you know, everything that we've heard over the last couple of months about the incredible excitement and enthusiasm, particularly around youth girls hockey, and I know that that is just one small part of the story, but basically, as I understand it, that would go poof without Founder's. Like, we need the extra ice time for that to happen. All of us want to see stuff like that happen. There has to be a way to do both of these, so I really, really encourage the administration to figure out, maybe it costs a little more money. Okay, like, we can work together on that, a way to have both ice in the winter and a rec center during the summer.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. I want to thank the chair for sending this back to committee. I just want to be clear where I am. I, you know, the other night, you know, sometimes we're in a finance committee and we're staring down, you know, this item that's like, has this sale tag on it that has all these things, roller rinks, and all these things are going to happen there, and, you know, well, who wants to go, you know, vote against that? Not fully understanding the needs for ice until speaking to some constituents after the fact, I'm glad to have a second bite at this apple because honestly, I, if the vote did go down tonight, I'll tell you right now, I'd be voting against approving this. So I want to thank the council for doing everybody, doing the right thing by everybody and bringing it back to committee so we can have a discussion. You know, I asked questions that sort of speak to all of these issues, and I wasn't totally satisfied, but again, you know, we don't always get it right the first time. So I'm happy to continue the discussion, and hopefully, we can have a solution that will not only meet the needs of all of our residents, children, women playing hockey, everybody, and have that recreation center as well. That's my hope, so I just, you know, thank you for this.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. I support sending this back to committee for more discussion. I do want to give some credit to the city for thinking outside the box, trying to figure out a plan here. We've all asked for recreation areas throughout the city, and unfortunately, they already put out the announcement. I'm looking at it in the headline right now. That's a nice little cartoon, but it's actually an outdoor venue, so it's interesting, though. I do want to give them the credit for actually doing what we're asking them to do. But, you know, and I acknowledge there's a lack of space in the city. This is the issue we keep coming across, is a lack of space. But the one problem here is you can only play hockey on ice. You can't go somewhere else and do this. You can't go down to the playground and play ice hockey. And it seems like every time we come up with a new space, it's taking away from something else. My neighborhood, we lost the Somerville Boxing Club. We also lost the original rec center that the mayor's office put in because the Winter Hill School needed to be moved to the Edgely School. Sometimes things can't get helped, but we had a wonderful boxing club that was open to everyone in the community to come in, and we lost that. And I just think we've got to keep working at trying to find a good space, something that's going to fit everyone. I do have a little bit of a solution to offer, as I know the mayor has mentioned before that she wants to do youth centers throughout the city, like Little Pocket Youth Centers. And one of my requests for this budget season has been the Teen Empowerment Center at 165 Broadway, which is not ADA accessible. It's in not good shape, and it could be in better shape. And that's an area that's staffed, it has full staff to deal with teens and to have people come and go if we put some money in it. If it takes a little while, we're talking $160,000 in free cash, I'll take that money, and we could do something there for it while we try to figure out what to do about this hockey rink. So I support sending it back to committee and getting some more information.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to the good counselor-at-large for bringing this concern to the full council and for suggesting that we continue the discussion. I couldn't agree more. I'll keep my comments very brief. I agree with everything that's been said. But to add, first, you know, a lot of the conversation has been, you know, a hockey rink versus a recreation center. So two clarifications. It's not a hockey rink, it's an ice rink. Lots of things happened there, as we heard. Hockey, figure skating, learning to skate generally, and potentially other sports like curling, broom ball that happen on ice and user creativity. Second, an ice rink is a recreation center. I mean, it is a recreation center. And the good counselor from Ward 1 just noted the lack of space we have in the city. The time of the year when we feel that lack most excruciatingly is the winter. So when I saw the proposal to, you know, to use the Founder's Rink in the summer for in the warm months for various things, again, I agree, sounds great. We've done this in the past. We've used it. We've put turf down. We've used it in the summer with the windows open, but it was still an ice rink in the winter. The idea that we would spend money to effectively destroy, remove, take off-line one of the very few community recreation centers that we have that is functional during the wintertime is completely illogical to me. I can't possibly fathom how that could seem like the right thing to do in the warm, you know, weather. We have lots of other spaces, not as many as we'd like, but certainly more than we have in the winter. This is one of the few places we have in the winter that the community can recreate in various ways, and there's absolutely no way I'll ever vote for anything that shuts that off. So I look forward to hearing, hopefully, a creative solution. Whatever we were doing a few years ago seemed to work because we were using it in the summer and using it in the winter, but it's got to stay open in the winter. That's when we need it the most. So, thank you.
Counselor Mbah.
Thank you, Madam President. As somebody who was, you know, assisted in finance, I was one of the votes, you know, supporting this proposal because it was actually sold also that it's multipurpose, you know, and who doesn't support, like, various kinds of activities in that space? And later today, I think I spoke with the administration and tried to ask, because one of my daughter's teacher, also the son plays, you know, hockey, and listened to her this morning, I really figured out that the main thing was not even the multipurpose, that there would be no ice time. So I said, no, this is not, I thought it's like an addition, not just, you know, taking one piece, you know, away. So I want to thank, you know, the counselor for bringing it back to committee. If the main thing is finance, I think we can figure that out. So thank you for advocating for this. Thanks.
Any other comments? Counselor Klingon.
Madam President, real quick, and I just say real quickly, I just want to acknowledge the kids for coming up this evening and showing us.
Thank you. I was going to do that, too. So you read my mind. Thank you. Just appreciate you all being here. I have an almost-two-year-old who I hope is half as actively engaged as those in this room tonight. So thank you for your outreach this week, and looking forward to continuing the conversation in committee. Any other comments? All right. Thank you so much for being here. This item will be sent to committee, yes. And do we have?
Madam President, that puts next the Finance Committee report of March 25, 2025, before the council on that item. Counselor Mbah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Counselor Burnley, on the, oh, on the committee report. Okay. Counselor Burnley, yes.
Thank you. Sorry, through the chair. I certainly, I just wanted to acknowledge one moment I thought was really important from that meeting that Counselor Wilson did reference. I did have two items before the committee related to short-term rentals and adding a 3% community impact fee on those. And one was, can we do it? And can we get half of that money into supporting local artists with grants, to preserve artist spaces, et cetera? And I just want to note for the council, for those of you who did not read the minutes or did not watch the meeting, according to, I believe, law, and I don't know how good at math they are, but according to law, that 3% community impact fee would generate $400,000 a year annually for the community. That $400,000 could be incredibly transformative for the lives of local artists who scrape by paycheck to paycheck, week to week. And I want to also note that in that meeting, the administration did note that they will be pursuing that 3% community impact fee. And I hope, and I reiterate my hope, that we can use it as it was designed for affordable housing, but also to support our local artists who are in a critical, critical state right now. So just wanted to point that out. More money coming.
Great. Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, Madam President, I want to thank my colleague-at-large for calling attention to that. I was remiss in also not mentioning the aforementioned clarification from the administration that the reminder, there is an item in legislative matters currently that is seeking to do exactly that. So Godspeed to our colleagues in legislative matters. Let's eagerly await something coming out of that.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, that brings the committee report in front of us.
On the Finance Committee report, Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeldt.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor and one absent, that committee report is approved.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
And that, Madam President, is going to put an item for ordainment before this council. That is Item 25-0370, amendments to Sections 2-322 and 2-323 of the Code of Ordinances to update non-union positions and salaries.
On that. Counselor Burnley.
Through you, motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Madam Clerk, shall we take a roll?
It'll be on enrollment. Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeldt.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor and one absent, that item is enrolled and on ordainment. Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Neufeld.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor and one absent, that item is enrolled and on ordainment. Counselor Bah.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Neufeld.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, that item is ordained.
Okay, next item.
The next item that this council will be taking out of order is going to be item 9.36, a public communication from 34 registered voters submitting a petition for a ballot question to end city business and prohibit future investments and contracts with companies engaging in business with Israel.
Colleagues, let me start by sharing, I know and respect, there are a lot of people here with strong opinions and feelings about this item. However, this is not a public hearing tonight, and it's not reasonable for us to be here all night on this one item. So I'd like to propose to my colleagues that we hear two speakers from each side of the issue and move on to deliberation within the council. So with that, I know Counselor Scott wants to call the first speaker.
Madam Chair, I don't think I am up first.
Oh.
No.
Okay. No speakers? Okay, Counsel Burnley.
Although, through the chair, although I would be fine doing no speakers and just taking the vote frankly, I do have, and if colleagues want to jump in on that, you know, raise your eyebrows, but I do have a speaker I'm willing to sponsor. If allowable, I'd like to sponsor Jamal Halawa to speak.
There's certainly a question before us around if we want to allow speakers or not. Would anyone like to take roll on that? Counsel McLaughlin.
Madam President, I'd say, you know, I'm not gonna not allow speakers, but if the option is on the table to move forward onto the item itself, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Any other feelings on this? Counsel Ewan Campen.
I'll just say, Madam President, I've never voted against a sponsored speaker in any context. I'm not planning to tonight. If someone wants to sponsor a speaker, I'm happy to hear, you know.
Okay. All right. Counsel Burnley.
All right, through the chair, I'd like to sponsor Jamal Halawa to speak.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. I'm here to ask you to put our petition on the ballot. I'm here to ask you to let people of Somerville decide how they will answer the moral question of our time. My name is Jamal Halawa. I'm a Somerville resident. I've lived here and worked here for a long time. My father's from Nablus, in the West Bank, in Palestine. I live in Somerville and I teach at Somerville High. I work with young immigrant kids. More and more, I see how much we have in common. We've learned implicitly to be accommodating of other people's casual racism, to be quiet, to internalize our parents' fears that our otherness would get us marginalized, hurt, or dragged away. Seems maybe they were right, our parents. Over the past year and a half, I've been silenced at school committee, at work. I've been harassed and threatened. I've been assaulted, I've been doxxed, I've been falsely charged. We, those of us who speak about Palestine and about what Palestinians endure, have been attacked, we've been beat up, we've had our families and futures threatened. Palestinians in the U.S. have been repeatedly victimized. Little Wadiya murdered outside of Chicago. Hisham shot and paralyzed in Vermont. And I can't understand why our elected officials cannot bring themselves to condemn this anti-Arab, anti-Muslim, anti-Palestinian hate here in Somerville in the U.S., much less in Palestine. Now masked men are grabbing students off the streets, stealing them away, and throwing them into unlawful detention for speaking the truth about Palestine, where an apartheid regime is currently conducting a genocide against Palestinian people. And if you doubt that it's apartheid and genocide, read the folks who have been there. Read Tenahasi Kotz's book. Read Jimmy Carter's book. Read Archbishop Desmond Tutu. Read Edward Said. Read Rashid Khalidi. Read the decision of the International Court of Justice in The Hague. Read Amnesty International, look at Human Rights Watch. As the apartheid regime remains unchecked and the genocide continues, and while anyone who speaks against it is labeled, discredited, or disappeared, no one in power seems to want to speak out. When we equivocate, the oppressors grow stronger. Today, they're taking away the ones who speak out for peace in Palestine. Who will they take next? And what will we tell our kids in 10, 15 years when they ask us how we resisted? We're not asking you, council members, to take a stand. We're not asking you to speak truth to power. We're asking you to listen. We're asking you to open the way for the people of Somerville to tell you, the ones we elected, what we want to do. Don't stand in the way. Let people speak their conscience and vote. Put this question on the ballot. Thank you.
We are resuming with the meeting, thank you. Counselor Strezzo.
Madam President, I'd like to sponsor Samantha Joseph to speak, Somerville resident.
Samantha.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Samantha Joseph, and I have lived in Somerville for the past 15 years. And the last time I had a chance to address this group was as your guest. And thank you for that opportunity. This is my community. I am your neighbor. And frankly, it's upsetting and exhausting to have to be here today to explain why I deserve equal rights in this city that I have called home for so many years. I was a little kid when my mom chose to fulfill her calling to become a rabbi, the spiritual leader of a Jewish community. And every day, I saw the incredible sacrifices that she and my dad made to lead a life of service and the incredible impact it had. They raised my sisters and me with tikkun olam as our family's core value. That is the responsibility that we each have to repair our world. This core Jewish value has guided me through my entire life and career, where I have worked in government and nonprofits, served as a foster parent here in Somerville, and always helped to support the most vulnerable members of our community. I spend my day as the New England Regional Director of ADL, the Anti-Defamation League, which has a mission to stop the defamation of the Jewish people and to secure fair and just treatment for all. This gives me an opportunity to speak to this challenge as both a member of this community and as a professional who spends her entire day fighting antisemitism and all forms of hate. The inclusion of this question on the ballot will negatively impact our community. With the use of divisive, false, and libelous terms like apartheid and genocide, two aspects of Israeli actions and policy, this not only serves to demonize the Jewish state and all who exist, all who support its existence. And I've been there, and I know that those words are false. Being Jewish and loving Israel are essential to my identity. I lived there at the start of the Persian Gulf War and carried a gas mask to my third-grade classroom. My sister is an Israeli citizen, raising her two beautiful children there. And when a rocket is fired at them, almost nightly for the past year and a half, she and her family spend the night in their stairwell because there is no bomb shelter in their building. And I stay awake with them, praying for their safety and the safety of everyone impacted by the war. I know that many of the Jewish and Israeli residents of Somerville who are here today and who live in our community share this experience. The founding goals of the BDS movement are to reject and ignore the Jewish people's right to self-determination and to eradicate the world's only Jewish state. Those are their goals. And I want to be clear, that is antisemitic. And due to its roots in antisemitism, BDS campaigns lead to heightened tensions and divisions, particularly affecting Jewish individuals and supporters of Israel. They create an environment where antisemitic actions and expressions are emboldened, leading to the isolation and intimidation of community members. These campaigns undermine community cohesion and foster an atmosphere of hostility and misunderstanding. Just tonight, while you had community members here, you know, dealing with incredibly important and meaningful personal issues, they were being disrupted by all of, you know, this conversation. So Somerville already has serious incidences of antisemitism, vandalism, and harassment. Already, you are facing those issues, and your residents are. Every single day, I get reports of them through our incidents response system. And in this very, in this very, not room, right outside this room, there is a poster with a swastika on it. A poster with a swastika on it, in Somerville, in City Hall. Somebody was emboldened enough to bring a swastika to this meeting. Right, imagine what that feels like for the Jewish and Israeli residents in this room right now. We cannot allow this to continue. The BDS movement targets businesses and organizations associated with Israel and leads to disruption in local communities like ours. This has backlash, this will be backlash against Jewish-owned businesses and their supporters. The city solicitor has already confirmed that what is on the ballot question, what it asks for, is illegal. So why are we even here? As such, this question is nothing more than a symbolic gesture driven by bias rather than what's best for this community. Furthermore, municipalities that pass resolutions, BDS resolutions without addressing other international issues have faced scrutiny regarding their impartiality. Where is the concern for the actual genocides taking place in other parts of the world? We want the Somerville City Council to focus on fostering inclusivity and encouraging open dialogue that respects diverse perspectives rather than adopting divisive resolutions on international matters. As a respected leader, your voice can help promote unity and strengthen community bonds. You can ensure all residents of Somerville feel safe and supported. My dad recently asked me if I should stop wearing my Jewish shar that I have worn my whole life. It is your job to make sure I never have to. You were elected to uphold the law and to stand against measures that will incite division and increase antisemitism. My identity is not up for debate, and it is not allowed on the ballot. Thank you for, thank you for your dedication. Thank you for your dedication to serving our community and for all your efforts to ensure that Somerville remains a place where equal rights are there for all citizens. Thank you.
Counselor.
Madam President.
Counselor, if you are disruptive to our meeting, I will clear the chamber. Please allow us to continue the business of city government. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. Now I'm up. I'd like to ask the council to, I'd like to sponsor Alan Jalen, Ward 2 resident, to speak on it.
Thank you. I'm Alan Jalen, I live on Dane Street. I'm a member of the Jewish Caucus of Somerville for Palestine. And, you know, I want to say I don't know about this swastika, but I'm very sensitive to antisemitism. I grew up in an antisemitic neighborhood in Queens, in New York. I remember that there was a family that wouldn't let my sister ride in the same car with their daughter because she was Jewish.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jalen, I would like to hear you speak. So is there any way we can quiet the folks in the hallway? Thank you.
That's not me.
Thank you. Go ahead.
You know, my family moved here from France in 1948. And in their first apartment, they were, when people discovered that they were Jewish, they told them that they couldn't continue to live there because there was a handicapped person living in that apartment, and they couldn't take the risk of having a Jew in that apartment. So I'm very well aware that there's antisemitism in our community. And I've been a member of Somerville for Palestine for now many months. And I have to say that I have never heard the slightest hint of antisemitism from anybody in that organization. So I assume, I assume that the people who are commenting are not members of Somerville for Palestine, so don't really know. I'm not saying that there's no antisemitism in Somerville. I totally believe that there is. In fact, I know, I'm remembering an incident, but not in this group. Now, that's not what I was planning to say, though. What I was planning to say was, I don't know if you all have seen No Other Land, the film about the destruction of a town on the West Bank that won the Emmy for Best, the Oscar for Best Documentary this year. The construction vehicles that are shown demolishing homes and a children's school in that film were not made by Caterpillar. But CAT bulldozers play a central role in similar demolitions in the West Bank and Gaza. I have good friends who are Zionists. They don't support those demolitions, there are many Zionists who don't. But when I see a CAT vehicle at a road construction site in Somerville, I know that we are all helping to enrich a company that's deeply engaged in this longstanding Israeli government strategy. There's also Hewlett-Packard, which supplies the school department's computers, and also those that are used to run the wars in Gaza and the West Bank. That's what this proposed ballot question is about. We should all have a chance to vote on whether we all have to keep supporting companies like these. Now, I often hear, I often hear, and I heard just a minute ago, that we shouldn't single out Israel. There are lots of other bad actors in the world, certainly. If we find out that Somerville is paying companies that commit war crimes in Sudan, Eastern Congo, Myanmar, or anywhere else, absolutely, we should stop hiring those companies. But Palestine is where, Palestine is where we know that CAT and other companies are destroying homes and lives. I don't want my tax money to help them. But the issue before you tonight is actually not whether you feel the same way. It's simply whether to allow the wide public discussion that would come from a ballot question. I went to the rally last night for the young woman from Turkey who was abducted from one of our streets. And I was going to talk about her, but you already did very eloquently. But what I want to say is that there were people at that rally who completely opposed boycott and divest. They came out to defend her right to speak. And I'm guessing, and I'm guessing that there are people here who defended her tonight, who also don't support boycott and divest. This question is important to me and many other residents of Somerville. We want to make our case to all the voters. Please let us do it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Strezzo, I think you have the last speaker.
Madam President, I'd like to sponsor Daniel Engel to speak.
Daniel Engel, please quiet the folks in the hallway so we can continue on with our city business. Thank you. Daniel?
Good evening, Madam President and members of the city council. My name is Daniel Engel. I live down the street in Ward 3. I urge you to reject this BDS ballot question and condemn the swastikas inside and outside this room. this room. I'm a proud Israeli-American Jew with heritage from Yemen, Morocco, Germany, Eastern Europe. My last living grandparent lives in Israel, along with countless other family members and friends. I work for a company with numerous Israelis. This resolution has an impact on me and those around me. I want to talk about one particular phrase that I've heard a few times today: "Globalize the Intifada." We hear this frequently at rallies in support of Palestinians, a pithy phrase talking about resisting for Palestinians' freedom. What does this phrase mean? How many of you have seen or heard a car bomb go off? How many of you have lost a friend in a shooting? A car ramming? A suicide bombing? I was 11 when I first heard a car bomb explode. It was summer 2000 amidst the Second Intifada. I was at my grandmother's apartment in Israel, sitting on the porch of the fifth floor, getting ready to go to the beach. I was looking out the window at the intersection of Herzlindisengöf in the heart of Natanya. I had just turned away from the window, and then boom, followed by cries, screaming, police, ambulance sirens. Two were dead, 12 injured, a relatively small impact compared to some of the other bombings that occurred in that nine-mile-wide strip between the West Bank and the Mediterranean. The one that was most impactful to me was the Park Hotel suicide bombing on the first night of Passover, March 27th, 2002, 23 years ago today. My cousins, my great uncle, my grandfather had stayed at that exact hotel four months earlier. Thirty dead, 140 injured, on a day when Jews celebrate freedom. Words matter. When you speak of freedom, you advocate for the release of Rumesa Oz Turk, the tough student arrested by ICE earlier this week. When you speak of Intifada, you advocate for fear, death, and destruction. Can you imagine another Boston Marathon bombing at Porch Fest? That's what you advocate for when you say those words. Globalize the Intifada is a call for violence against Jews and Israel's existence. The boycott, divestment, and sanctions movement is a call to destroy Israel economically. Both of these strategies have the same effect here in Somerville. Jews and Zionists feel that they are in danger and unwelcome in this city. As you debate boycotting, divesting, and sanctioning within the city of Somerville, you open three wounds for me. First, you make me, as an Israeli-American Jew, feel the same fear that I felt that day on my grandmother's porch. You tell me that you want to bring the Intifada here, and I take your word at face value that you're going to start shooting and bombing Jewish shops. I see my ancestors and why they left Germany, Yemen, and Morocco. I think to myself that you see me and my family as Dummies or second-class citizens in the Arab world, where my family was forced to flee. BDS targets my identity and my heritage. You, as city councilors, would never let any other group be treated that way. Second, you're directing the government to ignore the needs of many of its citizens. How many companies in this city have contracts or do business with Israel? Will Somerville Fire be told to not respond to a company that has a medical emergency? Are they now banned from responding to a burning synagogue? You know how residents, Jewish and otherwise, wondering if they're on a list of the city's Ju-, excuse me, Israel-connected businesses? We are very familiar with lists. Based on the text of this ballot question, Yafa Bakery, owned by a local, super-sweet Palestinian gentleman, could be banned from doing business with the city simply because he shipped olive oil from Noblis in the West Bank via Israel. Third, you put a target on, you put a target on the backs of Jews across the city. You open the door for every rabid antisemite who comes through the city to assault or berate a Jew because they are Jewish. Is this 1938 Vienna, the Anschluss, or Munich Kristallnacht? 1941 Baghdad, the Farquhar massacre, where 180 Jews were murdered and 700 were injured? October 7th, 2023, where 1,200 Israelis, Jewish, Arab, Christian, Druze, Circassian, were murdered in cold blood? Numerous Jews have expressed to me that they fear for themselves, their livelihoods, and their families, both here and abroad. Many are considering leaving or have already left Somerville. A friend who wants to move to Somerville is currently reconsidering because of this specific motion. A family considered withdrawing their children from SPS because a student walked up to their son and said, "My family says that we can't be friends with Jews." Two sisters said to their parents this week that they want to move back to Maine because, quote-unquote, "Nobody cares about Israel there." A small business owner said to me yesterday that they are unwilling to speak, excuse me, at city council, on this topic because they're concerned about putting a target on the back of themselves and their business. This is the human cost of supporting this ballot proposal. Like many in this room, I'm a left-leaning liberal. I say loud and proud that LGBTQ rights matter, that we should be fighting back against unjustified ICE raids and the dismantling of the Department of Education, that we should be paying a progressive income tax where the richest pay more than the poor, and perhaps most importantly, that the Ginny Smithers Pool should be reopened already. These are the items that I want my city council to be discussing, not foreign policy resolutions that will have no effect on a war 5,000 miles away with 1,000 years of history. We're wasting the council's time when there are much more important issues at stake. Yalla, let's end this discussion now. Councilors, in summary, please reject this ballot initiative. By not doing so, you turn Zionists and Jews into second-class citizens and make us question why we're a part of this community that so many of us hold near and dear. Thank you, and have a good night.
Those who spoke this evening, I am moving on. Thank you. Thank you to those who spoke. Um, I'd like to make a motion to place this on file. And Counselor Yuen Campan, would you like to speak to that?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Thank you to everyone for, for being here tonight. Everyone has reached out to us. Based on a lot of the emails and calls that I've received, I'm concerned that there is at least some misunderstanding about what is actually before the council. I want to be really crystal clear about what is before us tonight and what our powers and our options are. For any ballot question that a group of voters wants to bring to get on the ballot as a non-binding question, the mandatory first step is to bring it to the council. There is no way to just go get signatures. They have to bring it to the council, anyone. At that point, the council has basically two options: can effectively vote to fast-track it, you know, a majority of this council could just vote and put it on the ballot, or we could decline to do that in any number of ways, just, you know, place it on file, vote no, whatever. And that starts the process where folks can go get signatures. In my time on the council, I have not seen a voter-led ballot get fast-tracked to the ballot. I have not, I've been on here for seven years, so I'm sure that it's happened. But it, it would be atypical and unusual. Um, I, I don't think that's the right move for this one. And to be clear, for those who have reached out asking for us to block it, there is nothing that a city council can do to block a ballot question. We can't block anything from moving forward if the folks who want it on the ballot gather signatures. And also, as a point of information, just for people who reached out, we were advised that the council also cannot amend the language. I haven't heard that anyone wishes to do that, but in theory, if we wanted to, we cannot. So my view is the best course of action, Madam President, as you just said, is to place this item on file. If the proponents want to go get signatures, it is their absolute right to go do that, and then it is up to the people of Somerville, as had been stated. That's why I'm in support of this.
Thank you. Any other councilors who should speak on this? Let's call roll.
On the motion to place this item on file, Counselor Ba.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Yuen Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
No.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
No.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Excuse me, we are voting. Thank you.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Perneda Neufeld.
Yes.
With nine councilors in favor and two opposed, that item is placed on file.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will... Do have one more item to take out of order, but we'll take a 10-minute recess right now before we do that.
Cowards of my mother's mother's life.
The people will decide. 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 The people will decide.
And Bea, I just wanted you to say you're here. Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Pranita Neufeld.
Here.
With all counselors present, we have a quorum.
Great, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is going to be item 8.4, an officer's communication from the Executive Director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, conveying disparity study findings and recommendations.
Wonderful, we, yes, I know, we're very excited about this item. We have the consultants, I believe, on Zoom, Madam Clerk? Can we pull them up? Okay, great. Director's saying, is there anything you'd like to share? Or, I'm so sorry, I didn't see you there. Welcome, yes, please introduce us.
Through the chair, my name is Luis Kishpe. I am the Strategic Planning and Equity Manager in the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development. I help our seven divisions build structures for equity. Joined tonight by Angela Allen, Director of Purchasing and Contracting Services. And we're joined online by Griffin and Strong, our consultants for the disparity study that we'll be going over tonight. Next slide, please. Okay, so we're going to be going over a couple of things here, and I'm hoping to keep this within 10 minutes for our presentation. We're going to be going over the timeline of how we got to this point. We're going to be going over the disparity study findings, the recommendations, which will be done by our consultant, Griffin and Strong, Michelle Clark Jenkins, the research director there. And then we're going to be talking about the next steps after the study and taking questions afterwards. Thank you, next slide. So I'm going to start us off in 2021, and I'm going to have Angela cover this. She actually wasn't here then, but she was.
Good evening through the chair. Once again, I'm Angela Allen, Chief Procurement Officer. I've come before this council a number of times, pre-2021, pre-pandemic, to address as best I could your questions about how many, what's our data for how many minority and women-owned businesses are under contract or do business with the city? And I know, I believe it was Counselor Ewan Kempin also asked about what would be required if we wanted to have some sort of prioritization of businesses that are disadvantaged on city contracting? The outcome of those questions from a legal point of view on the data side was that we don't have the mechanisms to track data thoroughly. My office has been focused on what we can do now, but we did get an opinion from our city solicitor's office that we would need to conduct a disparity study in order to set the basis for a potential prioritization program, but also the other part of that would be to address the data questions. So I'll turn it back to my colleague, Mr. Kishpe, and we'll proceed with the presentation.
Okay, so that takes us to 2022, when I arrived in my position, and one of the projects I was assigned to me then was a disparity study. And so I had to get my bearings on that, do some field research on what disparity studies were, what they entailed. And then we started the process of gathering our working group together and doing some research for the bids that we were going to put out for it. And then affirmative action was ruled in the Supreme Court, and it kind of put a halt to the project for us because we didn't know what impact that was going to have on the legal structure of which a disparity study was based on. So if we wanted to do this, would we start a project that would later then lose its credibility altogether? Legal-wise, we didn't know those questions, we had to figure that out. Counsel also was present at that time telling us that we should continue forward with this disparity study, and we eventually did do that, and we got the bid out. And we selected Griffin and Strong as our consultant. We applied for ARPA funds for the project. We got those funds, and we started the project in 2023. Around the summer, we kicked off. Next slide, please. And then we moved into fall of 2023, and we started the project by doing a kickoff and understanding what data we needed in order to study whether or not we were doing all that we could to work with minority and women business enterprises. That took a little bit of time to get all of that data. We don't have, we didn't have it in a way that was easily producible. We're talking about a period from 2018 to 2022, and that took us into fall 2023, winter of 2023. And that's when we also started kicking off the public meeting to inform the public of this, try to get input from the business community. We did a legal analysis, qualitative analysis, case law review, policy review, reviewing what our policies were, how we hire people for contracts and things of that nature, and also getting feedback from the business community on what challenges and barriers they were facing in doing business with us, all to get a sense of like, what is all the data out there about that explains how well we're doing on a report card of doing business with minority and women business enterprises? So that all kind of completed around the beginning of spring 2024. We had a lot of the data collection completed. Next slide, oh, you got it, okay. And then we went into the qualitative data collection, where we are reaching out to business leaders or businesses and industries that we do a lot of business in, and going a little deeper, interviewing them, getting their perspective. And that rounds out the quantitative data that we collect with qualitative information we get to make as much context out of that. That brings us to where we are now, where we have the analysis done. The final report was drafted, and we're ready to show you what our recommendations are and our findings. So with that, I'm going to throw it over to Michelle Clark Jenkins, Research Director of Griffin and Strong, and she's going to be going over the findings and recommendations for the disparity study.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to present the findings and recommendations of our disparity study. Again, my name is Michelle Clark Jenkins. I'm the Director of Methodology and Research for Griffin and Strong. We are a law and public policy consulting firm based in Atlanta, Georgia. We've been doing this work for about 35 years. So this is a very condensed version of our findings, but our parameters were that we looked at your data from July 1st of 2017 through June 30th of 2022. And when I say we looked at your data, we looked at all your payments, your awards, your bidders. We did solicit to find subcontractors. So we put all that data together in terms of doing our analysis. And we disaggregated the data by industry categories. So we looked at construction, architecture, and engineering, professional services, and again, professional services are non-construction-related professional services. Other services are kind of that catch-all category, and then goods is anything that's tangible. We then looked at the data also by disaggregating by ethnicity and gender. So where you're looking at this box of Xs is where we found statistically significant underutilization of those groups in those categories. The only places where we found overutilization was Asian-American-owned firms in professional services and Hispanic-American-owned firms in professional services. And this is related to prime contracting, those who had contracts directly with the city. Next slide, please. We then, since you don't keep subcontractor data, you don't track it, which of course is one of our recommendations, that you do track subcontracting because that's a place where a lot of your small disadvantaged businesses are going to be performing services. And so if you want to get a really good count of your utilization, you're going to want to track that. So we did do a prime vendor questionnaire, and so we sent out a snail mail to all of your primes except goods, where there's little or no subcontracting, to ask them who their subs were that they used with that sample, so of course, that's a sample response. Again, where you see the Xs, there was statistically significant underutilization. On your high school project, there actually was some tracking of subcontractor spend. And so where you see the Xs is on that project, which was a large project, where there was still statistically significant underutilization. Next slide, please. So out of that, out of those, seeing those disparities, we recommended a number of things. One is data reform. It doesn't do any good to have a good program if you're not tracking that data. So the city should begin to track subcontractors across all industries, bid tabulations, it's a good idea. Bidders come in and they kind of leave, and they're never part of your pool. So we think that it should be mandatory for vendors to register with the city and able to place a bid. Doesn't have to be a complicated registration, but so that you can even notify them of other upcoming bids. Vendors conduct a thorough data inventory and create a centralized data repository that contains necessary vendor information. That was kind of a struggle for us, figuring out all the vendor information. Commodity codes are a good thing to use. It's a good way to notify firms, either NIGP codes or NICS codes, which indicate the type of work that firms do. Next slide, please. Our next recommendation was to implement a small disadvantaged business, contract-by-contract subcontracting goals program. But you would need to get authority from the Commonwealth because that's not currently there. But in other jurisdictions, we've seen where there is a lot of, there's not home rule, and the state, you have to get permission from the state. So in this case, we would suggest that you get permission from the Commonwealth, but you do have a factual basis to have contract-by-contract subcontracting program. Implement a race and gender-neutral sheltered market program. Again, this would have to be with authority from the Commonwealth. Both of these, of course, are subject to your, to the city attorney's opinion on this, but it looks as if you would have to get authority from the Commonwealth. I really love this recommendation because it's race and gender neutral. It's a threshold under which only small businesses can bid against each other. We heard a lot in anecdotal evidence gathering, unfair competition with large firms. So small firms may not even bid because they say, why bother? We can't win against a large firm who gobbles up small contracts as well as larger contracts. Recommendation four, consider individual experience of firms and their principles when you're evaluating bids. So right now, when you do, when you put out a solicitation, you want the experience of the firm. But it's a good idea to also get the experience and to consider the experience of whoever the lead is because that will actually encourage entrepreneurship as opposed to firms who say, well, I've had 20 years' worth of experience in this area, now I start my own business, and I can't get a contract because I don't have enough experience as a firm. Recommendation five is to provide small business development assistance. We have been discussing in a little more detail about what that would mean, but it's really supportive services, providing firms with, and we have a lot of examples of the kinds of supportive services that other jurisdictions about your size are doing around the country. Next slide, please. Enhance communication and marketing resources. We heard a lot in anecdotal of just not having information, of lack of outreach and familiarity with the bidding process. So firms really felt that there was an informal network that kind of excluded firms from obtaining projects. So there's this overall lack of communication, feeling as if they don't know what's coming up and that there's this, you know, small group of firms who get everything, and they know everything ahead of time. Enhance contract compliance is recommendation seven, which is really having some area, and that's whoever does contract compliance, who's ever going to track this stuff, that they get involved very early in the process, even at the beginning of when a solicitation is being put together. And they stay with that process through target marketing, bringing in firms who can, who may want to bid, assisting with subcontractors, helping firms to get themselves certified with the state, getting registered with the city, all the way through the award process, and actually all the way through the contract to make sure that there's tracking and monitoring, which is one of the most important parts of this. Because over and over again, we see, yes, I'm going to give 10% of this contract to this sub, and then that never happens. And then the contract's over, and that sub never got hired even though they were part of the original solicitation package. Then recommendation eight is to track MWB participation and review any claims. Recommendation nine, streamline the bidding process and limit paperwork. So what we understood is that on larger bids, it's kind of the same paperwork that smaller bids have. And so particularly small businesses don't have a person who just puts together their responses to solicitations. So we want to see you review that bid process so that on smaller, particularly less-risk kind of contracts, that that paperwork is reduced. Enforce prompt pay provisions and implement internal review of invoices. We did hear complaints about lack of prompt pay, which, you know, can put a firm under, particularly if they have subcontractors. We had about 36.5% of our survey respondents reported that it took 61 to 90 days to receive payment from the city. And same with subcontractors, about 19% said that they had, there was delayed payment of the same amount. So usually that happens because of one or two things. Either an invoice is sitting on somebody's desk or firms aren't properly putting in their invoices, so they keep getting kicked back. Either way, it's a good idea to kind of test and kind of track those and see how long it's taking to get paid. Particularly with SDBs, this is going to be really important. Again, you know, taking that long can really put a company under. And then also evaluate opportunities for additional staffing and resources. We always make this recommendation because some of the things that we're recommending as you began to look at implementation, do you have enough staff? Do you have a full-time equivalent who could help with this? Or do you need two? So those are really our recommendations.
Thank you, and I'll take over here for the implementation. So in order to implement these recommendations, we are kind of looking at it in two buckets of work, on work that we can take on as a city and work that we might want to get some help with. So this implementation timeline would kind of have a start with the legal gap analysis, and that's just with the legal department, and finding out what do we have the authority to do right now? And what do we, what do we not have the authority to do right now? And where would we need to get authority? Whether it's from the state or whether it's submitting some kind of ordinance that would be required? And then the second one would be to plan for the actual implementation. This is one that we could do on our own, but it could also benefit from having a partner helping us in drafting out what the best approach would be to making sure that we're creating a situation where we can implement all of the recommendations. And then the third one would be on us. After we have a plan, we'd want to just determine our aspirational goals. We want to figure out exactly how many, what are the metrics that we want to strive for? Is there a certain percentage of contracts that we want to have fulfilled? What is it that we can realistically propose as goals for us to work towards? And then it goes to having a program plan, and this is one that we would definitely probably need a consultant to help us with this recommendation process. We'll need to have a way to be able to take those goals and take that structure that we built out with the implementation plan and actually build out the actions and steps needed for each recommendation and what a structure would look like to make it all kind of tied together. And then once we have that, then we would have to figure out what the budget is after we know all of the steps necessary to complete these recommendations. And then at that point, evaluate whether we need new staff, full-time equivalents, how many hours we need to be able to put this, to bring this together. And then finally, once we have all of that in place, we can develop the training protocol and get our staff trained up on this. So if you notice here, there aren't any real price or timeline indicators on these recommendations because we have to kind of get all of, we have to start with the first step first, where we can figure a lot of that out. But where we could get, try to get ranges, we put them in relative figures by using the iconography of the time, hourglass, and a dollar figure to kind of give you a relative idea of how much one recommendation would cost in resources and time and money relative to the other, and same for the implementation. But that is our current plan, and we are available to take any questions.
Counselor Ian Kempin.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I just want to start with a huge note of gratitude to all the work that went into this. I mean, this is something we've been asking for this for years, and I know it's very clear how much work it took to get to this point. And obviously, the end result now is even more work, so I understand that. I certainly have not had time to digest this. But, you know, I hope in addition to all of the policy recommendations, we're also able to kind of tell a story to the public about these data because I think that's one of the real values here is kind of like building a general public understanding around this history, which is not unique to Somerville by any means. But these disparities are, they're stark, and we can play a role in helping to bring back equity. And I guess lastly, you know, I don't know how much we want to get into the details, but the recommendation about like streamlining internal policies around getting invoices paid. Obviously, this is something all of us have talked about and thought about, and I know that you all have too. Is that, you know, we were last informed that this was like a super-high priority for the CAO, and is there anything that you can share with us at this time about where that work is and, you know, improvements that have been made to that policy?
Yeah, through the chair, great question. That really is with the CAO, but procurement and contracting is part of the implementation of a vendor self-service module in our financial software that is, that's the top priority is to enable vendors to go in, enter their data directly, cut out the middle person, and just improve the accuracy of that information so they can check on their status real time. But the person who can really report on that would be our chief administrative officer.
All right, we'll follow up, thank you.
Counselor Brilling.
Thank you, through the chair. They said it couldn't be done. They said it'd take a million years. They said, we got to talk to Brookline. We got to talk to other places like Brookline. I don't know. But here we are. Firstly, thank you both for this work. The good director. And I spoke about this in committee two or three years ago. I think it might have been three, my first year on the council. And, you know, we talked a lot about the difficulties of doing something like this, the challenges, the different ways we could do it. I kind of want to just revisit that conversation slightly because I remember at the time, we were talking about, should we partner with other communities to do this? Should we not? Should we go about it on our own? And it's been quite a while, and I'm glad it's here. But I just want to double-check. We did not, the data that's presented before us is all strictly Somerville. We didn't end up partnering with other communities to do like a multi-municipal disparity study, correct?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. Yes, we did actually end up partnering with Brookline. But each committee, or each community, rather, received their individual report. So there are some areas of overlap where we had some cost savings in conjunction with doing a multi-jurisdictional disparity study, such as a market analysis, because we generally have similar markets that we're pulling from. But each community got their own report, unique to them. So the data that was collected, as far as the analysis for the community was done like separately. So we both have two separate individual reports.
All right, thank you. Through the president. Oh, would you like to?
Yeah, through the chair, I'd like to also address that question. Thank you for bringing it up. Griffin and Strong was our joint consultant for this project. And my understanding is that the data collected was, there were some of the data involves both communities but also the Commonwealth of Massachusetts because we buy off of statewide contracts. Our consultant could speak to this more eloquently than I, but the data really is our relevant market area. And as you all know, we are in a very dense environment here, and we, all our communities actually procure the same services, and it's the same vendor pool. So to make it easier for them to compete, not have to go to every individual city's website or town's website, one of the recommendations was to look at joint marketing opportunities. But as for the data, it really is broader than Somerville. So I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Yeah, if I can, if I could interject.
Thank you, through the chair. It's good to know, and it really, I guess, illuminates why Brookline was top of mind for me, I guess. And I don't- Oh, and I don't want to, you know, give you guys more homework, but I am very curious to, you know, see how we compare and, you know, try to collect, look at some of these numbers, and I expect that you all will be doing that. This is a very dense report, so I'm sure there's a lot of, I saw a lot of numbers to kind of look at. And I'm curious, because one of the reasons I pushed for this, and I know Counselor Ewan Kempin has been pushing for it since before I joined the council, one of the reasons I did though is partially because of a report that came out in 2021 from Boston, when they did their last disparity study. And one of the striking statistics that came from it was that less than one-half of 1% of prime contracts with private enterprise in Boston went to African-American-owned companies, or firms, or, you know, other words for that. I'm curious if we have any top-line numbers like that. Perhaps it's more relevant for Asian-American or Hispanic-American as those slides might show.
I think, Michelle, are you able to illuminate any specific figures?
Yeah, I'm able to. So if you're talking about prime contracts directly, in other words, those firms who are contracting directly with Somerville, if you combine, all minority groups is less than, it's a 0.06% in construction. Non-minority women are about 0.89%. So they're low numbers. And then when we looked at all spend across all categories, you were at 2.12% for minority-owned firms, and 1.49% for non-minority women-owned firms. And remember, you are always comparing that to availability in your marketplace, and your marketplace across the board in all industries for minorities was 14.18%, and for non-minority women, 12.62%. So that's why you see the X's as being statistically significant underutilization.
Okay, thank you. That is something that I very, very much wanted to understand and put numbers to at the beginning of this process, and I'm glad we have it. And I'm glad we are in a position to, you know, make progress on it. I know that certainly for the director, as many city staff have said, our goal is to do the work we can do now. You know, I'm not here to, you know, point fingers or to say, you know, you didn't do it. You didn't fix it. You didn't make it the right way the first time. This is America. I wasn't expecting that. But certainly with knowing that some of these percentages are less than 1%, again, there is certainly work to be done, and I'm excited to get to it.
You also, Counselor? Okay. Counselor Mbah, and then Counselor Wilson, and then Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I think Counselor Burnley really touched on a bunch of what I had to, because the first thing was about like methodology, which is something that I was trying to catch up with. But I think I will still have time to look at this data. It's a lot of work that you've gone, that you've done, so thank you. And the minority-owned businesses in the city and women-owned that, you know, and initiated it before I got an exile from the council in 2021, was that all like integrated in this study, like, or was it separate?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. No, that timeline was more to give context to how we got to where we are now, and how long we have been working on this as an issue as a community. It is not necessarily part of the report, but the report starts with the data, and it kind of goes from there. It doesn't start with like the historical context.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. I want to underscore comments that Counselor Ewan Kempin made around invoicing. It's something we talk a lot about on the council, and I want to make sure that people out there in the public understand why we're always banging on about that. You know, A, it's just important for a city to, you know, get its invoices paid just on a, as a matter of principle, but also it really hits small businesses so disproportionately hard, as we heard in that presentation, because, you know, 60, 90 days to pay an invoice, or longer, as we know, from paying prior invoices, just really creates problems for them. And just because of the history of our country, of our region, we know that it's going to be a disproportionately higher percentage of those smaller businesses that are going to be owned by minorities, by people of color, by women. And so that's why that's such a crucial component of this. The question I had was about the third recommendation. I don't know, through the president to either staff or the consultant, that the recommendation around implementing a race and gender-neutral sheltered market program with authority from the Commonwealth, obviously, you know, if we're talking home rule petition, it's going to be tough. But my interest was drawn to whether we could, whether that sheltering would allow us to give priority to a Somerville business specifically.
Yeah, so I can answer that. So local preference programs have a much, I'm sorry, local preference programs have a much lower threshold to jump over than almost anything else, so small or local. So yeah, you could, there are lots of jurisdictions who do their sheltered market program as a small, local business program. Several examples of that around the country that have been successful.
Through the president, I'd assumed as much. Thank you for confirming that. That's great to hear. You know, just all about keeping money in the community, and we know that here in Somerville, we do have a large number of businesses that are owned by minorities, people of color, women. Would love to see more of those funds for that work and those goods going to those businesses. Thanks.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to give a massive high five to everybody in the room that we finally got this. You know, I got to admit, our first conversation back in 2023, Manager Kishba, I wasn't sure we were going to get there, but I am so excited. You can imagine my thrill when I opened up a 302-page report, and then my disappointment to find that the back 180 of them are just appendices. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. It is, it is just an enormous amount of data. I'm really glad that the headline findings were presented tonight, and really not hidden, right? Because the whole point of this is to just find out where we're at. It is, now the next step is finding out where we can go from here, as others have said. As we do, I want to be mindful, and this is something that we will have to continue to do throughout the process of our role in legislating around purchasing protocols, because everything we add to the purchasing process adds, it can seem like a very simple thing on our end, and it can lead to absolute nightmare headaches that would require hiring three more people on the other end. So fortunately, Director Allen, you have always been an excellent partner with the legislature in my experience, and I feel confident that we can work together in implementing these solutions. But yeah, I really appreciate the leadership you all have shown on this. The only question I had right now, because I haven't done all the data analysis, the only question I had right now is that, are we leaving behind with this study? Because I understand there was a lot of data that had to get pulled in from a lot of places. Are we leaving behind an infrastructure that is going to make a reassessment of progress in five or 10 years easier to do? Or is it going to require the same amount of effort, the same five-year effort in commissioning a whole new study? Just a question.
Through the chair, thank you. That was, that's a great question. The first recommendation actually hits right to that point, is doing a lot of data reform that allows us to more easily pull and also actively monitor and track this. So we have, if we are going to set goals, we have more of an active way of measuring what our progress is to those goals and have it be reported out transparently. And I'm not sure, Director Allen, do you want to add anything to that?
Yes, through the chair. I've always said, what gets measured gets done. And it is a big undertaking, so I'd like to, this is one thing we were really looking to our consultants who provide us with not only a baseline, but how do we pull, how do we move forward with this, learn from this, but get the data, have it in a centralized place? So I'd like to offer, pitch the question to Michelle Clark Jenkins, if there's anything you can add to the counselor's question.
Yeah, you know, implementation is particularly important. I would say that probably the most important part of implementation is the data reform part, because you can put all these things in place and then you're not properly tracking them. One of the things that we can help with is because, for example, we looked at every vendor payment in over a five-year period. We looked at all of your bidders from your bid tabs. We looked at all your award data. So, you know, we probably know in some ways your data better than you do. And so, yes, we can be of assistance in terms of how you want to move forward. Also, we have a lot of experience around the country with just who's doing what. So we are really good at connecting you with other jurisdictions so that you can learn from them. We did actually a partnership with Living Cities where we did actually two cohorts with them, one with five cities, one with 10 cities, where they all learned from each other. But things like, you know, how do you, you know, what's the best software to use? Should we use software? Should we be doing it on our own? Those are things that some of your peers around the country, that we can connect you with, will be able to help as well. And of course, we'll make recommendations.
That was a very impressive sales pitch. But I do want to kind of boil down that answer there, which sounds like it was a giant pain in the butt to bring together data here, and that rather than replicate that process to monitor in the future, this data reform effort is really about setting up that. So we haven't done it yet, but we want to do it. Great. Awesome.
Yes.
I'm just so happy. This is the best thing I've heard all night, Madam President. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Other questions? Counselor Strazza.
I wanted to ask about the path of this disparity study. Were we planning on advising it to go to committee? I'd love to talk about it further in, along the Economic Development Office, along with the director and this, and get down to the deeper questions.
Sure. You mean send it to committee? Housing and Community Development? Is that what you're, okay. Counselor Burnley.
Through the chair, not to speak out of turn, I believe Counselor Wilson might have been interested in this going to finance, or at least was questioning whether it should.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, Madam President, I wasn't aware we were going to have a presentation on it, so happy to have that here before the full council. I assumed we might be having that discussion in finance, but if colleagues want to talk about it more, happy to take that in finance.
I'm equally happy to not take it in.
I'm happy with whatever.
Okay. Madam Chair? Happy for, yes, Counselor Strazza.
Yeah, I want to talk further about it in Housing and Community Development. I'd like to get deeper with how contracts are just setting small businesses up for being able to receive, for the city to be able to contract with them, but also how they're able to get a tax ID to be able to be ordered and purchased through, and how that, how minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses are getting that set up initially as well, so the city can quickly pivot and start purchasing through some of these businesses. This has been a conversation and a concern I've had for quite a few years, and I think we should be discussing it. This should be discussed in Housing and Community Development.
Right. Counselor Scott.
Madam President, I think that sounds great. I think this is a very comprehensive report covering a lot of different recommendations. I can foresee a bunch of different policy orders coming out to review some of these findings and talk about next steps, if I might. To my colleague, it sounds like rather than referring the entire report there, coming up with a policy resolution or policy order to be discussed in committee might be good. That way, we don't have to end up keep transferring the report from committee to committee to talk about the different things within it.
Right. Counselor, are you open to that? Strazza?
I'm sorry.
Are you open to submitting a separate order that doesn't have the report attached to it, so we don't have to keep sending it back and forth?
I mean, that's fine.
So we can just talk about it?
I'm not. That's fine.
Okay. Do you want to, should we do that now?
Next time.
Okay. Next meeting.
Madam President, if I may, through the chair, just want to clarify that if for those meetings, our consultant will not be available after tonight, their contract will be completed on a project.
Okay. Thanks for letting us know. Okay, so we'll submit that item for the next meeting. Great. Any other questions? Thank you so much for such a comprehensive report and presentation this evening. Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you for having me.
And we will place on file. Next item. Oh, and we're taking one more item out of order. Madam Clerk, can we do 10-9, please?
Yes, of course, Madam President. Item 10.9 is ordered by Counselor Burnley, that the Director of Racial and Social Justice address with this council the hostile actions taken against the Commission for Persons with Disabilities at their March 18, 2025 meeting, and discuss what steps can be taken to enhance the autonomy of the commission, including moving it from the purview of the RSJ department.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. I received a distressing call, followed by, which was, which came after an email that this council received from our Commission for Persons with Disabilities about some incredibly disrespectful behavior directed towards them at their previous meeting on March 18. From listening to the video, I was surprised to hear a member of city staff speak to members of the public in that way, and to shut down a meeting because they did not like what was being discussed. And it's kind of, frankly, it's kind of surprising that such a thing would happen on a recorded line with so many folks there, and that members of the public who have disabilities, in some cases who cannot see, were kicked out of a building because a member of city staff did not seem to like how they were talking. I'd like to sponsor someone who has also, a member of the public who's also watched that video, and who's been, who's emailed the council, and who's been very upset by the way that their neighbors have been treated, Crystal Huff, if my colleagues would allow.
Crystal, welcome.
Thank you. And through the chair. My name is Crystal Huff, and my pronouns are they/them, and I lived in, I've lived in Ward 5 for over a decade. I'm a Tufts grad student, and I sent you a corker of an email which I suspect you have not been able to read. Now, I'm really sorry about that, because I was on fire. I love Somerville. Somerville is not accessible enough, but I do love our city, and that is why I am so frequently in your inboxes. I would like to see Somerville become even better than we are now, and I think that this event points to a pattern in our city's access issues that is a major opportunity for growth, painful as it is. During the March 18 meeting of the Somerville Commission for Persons with Disabilities, partway through the fourth item on the agenda out of 12 items, the city's paid staff, our ADA coordinator for the entire municipality, perpetrated a really wild violation of rights and norms in this city. She interrupted the commission's meeting, she shouted, and when she was told by the chair that she didn't get to dictate the meeting agenda, she intentionally ended the meeting Zoom access for commissioners and the public. The members of the commission were then, who were attending in person, were then kicked out of the building. I do not know technically if that's illegal in the eyes of the Americans with Disabilities Act. It certainly feels illegal to me. The ADA coordinator was explicitly charged with making the city more accessible, not less. And when you go to the Somerville website to file an accessibility request for anything in this city, this is the only staffer currently assigned to do that work. I don't know how many people in this room have attempted to make their needs known. have attempted to make their needs known to the ADA Coordinator of Somerville, but I have. I have never successfully gotten my needs met by the ADA Coordinator, despite several requests. She did once non-consensually disclose my disability to other city staff. But when I say that this event is a part of a pattern of underlying issues that have bubbled to the surface, I am speaking from observation and also personal experience. The specific issue before you tonight is one of personnel, but also of the need for functional access to the city, to be enabled in the city through the staff. Whatever happens from here, I would like you to be more mindful of other ways in which Somerville perpetuates a lack of access instead of increasing access. I don't know if you notice when someone is absent because of a lack of accessibility. But there are other things that are more obvious. Somerville has owned a Braille machine for, what, a year or two? It is still in a box. We paid to have Braille materials printed for our elections last fall, but no polling location had both Volume 1 and Volume 2 of the Braille materials. I walked around this city for over four hours trying to find the second volume. I am outraged that paid city staff intentionally removed access for disabled residents of Somerville. I'm not surprised, but I am outraged. And I would like to be pleasantly surprised in the future. Please help fix this before it's my disabled body crawling up the stairs to this room to make an even larger point. Thank you.
We have Counselor Kling and Counselor Ba. Before we start discussion on this item, and then Counselor McLaughlin. Just to note, any conversation about personnel matters needs to be in executive session, not open session. Counselor Kling.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. I, too, viewed the video, and I have concerns. I know this isn't exactly a council matter. So my only real point in speaking right now is, you know, it's been over a week since Member Randvig wrote to us, well, to the mayor, and CC'd us. And we have yet to hear anything regarding this matter, which again, was all on video. So I don't know if anybody's prepared to speak this evening or when we can expect some sort of response from the administration regarding this issue and what is, how they're handling it.
Director Singh, do you want to speak to that?
Through the President, Counselor Kling, thank you for that question. We are working internally with the relevant departments to gather the information we need to respond to the concerns that have been raised, but to also put together a plan to ensure that future meetings are able to, were able to hold those meetings without any disruption. So we're putting together a plan and gathering the relevant information about what happened at the last meeting. And we look forward to coming back to the council with an update, but also getting back to the constituents and members of the commission who've reached out with their concerns.
Madam President, through you, I eagerly await that response. And if it's okay with colleagues, I'd like to sponsor the Chair of that committee in response to that to just say some brief words, just a few.
Counselor Ba and Counselor McLaughlin, is that okay to hold your comments until? Okay. Join us.
Sorry. Thank you, through you, Madam President. Thank you, all members of City Council. My name is Holly Simeoni, and I serve as the Chair of the Disability Commission. And we had a very unfortunate meeting, very publicly happened to us. And I did my best to remain very calm and very polite when faced with inappropriate behavior from the staff member. But this is not the first time that this has happened. This has happened for three years, but just not as publicly. If you were to go back and look at other meetings, you will probably see instances of not-nice behavior. But when it really happens is privately and in smaller groups. And I think what stirred me having this as part of the discussion was that before this meeting in February, there was another meeting where we were called to speak about the swings. And in that meeting, myself and Sheila were told that we were dishonest, that we don't bring information back to the commission, that we are not, again, reminded not to ever speak to anyone who is a city staff member, ever, in any capacity. We are only allowed to talk through the staff liaison. And we are not allowed to as a resident or not as a resident. And my head is spinning from the confusion if knowing I'm speaking as a chair or as a resident. But I know that I am a resident. I grew up here. I've lived here my whole life here. And I would never treat anyone the way that I've allowed someone to treat us for three years now. And to be told by a director that we are dishonest and that our behavior was appalling. And to be told that five months before, we had upset a member of staff who came to our meeting. If I had known at the time that that had happened or that person was upset, I truly would have apologized. And I apologized then. But I still have no way of speaking to that person because I'm not allowed to. I'm not allowed to have a voice. I'm not allowed to be found by any members of the public. We are not allowed to have an email address. We are not allowed to have our own Zoom account. We are not allowed to control any part of our meetings, which is why this person decided, and if you watch the video, you'll see how it was worded to us, to end the meeting. And we're volunteers. We're advocates. I do this because of my daughter. I don't do this for myself. I do this because she needed more. And if I can help someone else live a better life through whatever small amount of advocacy that I can do for us, and that spawns more goodness, that's a good day for me. Because I will never get her back. But I'm not going to let people upset, the people who volunteered to do this work. This is a full-time unpaid job. And I stood up for ourselves, and I did it in a very calm manner. And I did not want this to be at this meeting this way. I did not want this to happen in this manner. I wanted someone to give us the ability to finish our meeting and to handle this more privately. And unfortunately, this is where we're at right now. But it needs to be addressed. And it starts at a higher point. I have had, I've been told that I've had my agendas removed from the city's website. I've had them modified without my knowledge. I've been told what I can and can't put on my agendas. But to say that we are dishonest or that we don't share information is untrue. And I really hope that this is a lesson for people to understand that being a volunteer and a board in a commission is really hard work. And there is balance in the power in which all of you have with the mayor. And there is also supposed to be balance and opportunity between those who are elected and those who are appointed. And I take that very seriously. And not having a seat at the table and being told we cannot talk to anyone nullifies our work. And this was, this was a really terrible day after a really terrible meeting before that. And I just, I would just like to read something that I wrote. So at our last meeting, the ADA Coordinator, who serves as our staff liaison to the Commission for Persons with Disabilities, unilaterally shut down the Zoom meeting in anger before the meeting was properly adjourned. This was done without my consent as Chair and prevented the commission from completing its official business. She explicitly stated she would not sit by while you disrespect my department, suggesting this is a personal matter, not anything professional that was, that this was a, excuse me, as a personal matter rather than professional motivation for her actions. She continued to yell at members in the room after the camera ended and told us to pack up and get out. By the end of the meeting, by ending this meeting prematurely, she interfered with a public body's ability to conduct its duties, which may or may not be a violation of the open meeting law. Her actions disrupted the meeting's process. It silenced the commissioners' discussions, which directly contradicts the principles of public transparency. We have made some requests to have her role changed and to no longer be managed by a department that is telling us that we are not truthful and honest and is not supporting us. As far as what you discuss in another session, as far as disciplinary action goes, that's not within my purview. All I want to be able to do is have a meeting somewhere in this building in the next few days. Because we cannot vote, and we cannot, we cannot do the work that we are doing. And we will not be able to do that unless someone helps us have another meeting. And I've been, we have been asking for over a week now.
Thank you. I think Counselor Ba was up first, and then Counselor McLaughlin. Sure, are you open to questions, Holly?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's start with those. Counselor Scott, do you have a question?
As long as, I'm happy to wait my turn as long as I can come back to it.
Counselor Ba.
Chairman Scott, let me just, then I will give it to you. Holly, on behalf of the city, I'm sorry.
I can't hear you.
I just want to apologize on behalf of this.
That's my loss, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to say I'm sorry, on behalf of the city, that this happened to you and this commission. This is a disgrace. We need to maintain civic dialogue within our community, and most especially from our administration. I also watched the video. I think, yeah, I couldn't believe what I saw, but it is what it is. Thank you, Counselor Burnley, for bringing this to the table. I, you know, sometime I'm always frozen in time when I see something like this. I don't even know what to do unless somebody tells me what to do. You know, since I have colleagues that say, you know, when you're black, they always tell you what to do. They tell you to run for office. They tell you, you know, you're always running against somebody else, you know. So, but thank you. This is really, you know, hopefully, they will switch roles for this administrator, and we can return back to civility. I'm sorry again, on behalf of the city.
Counselor McLaughlin.
All right. Thank you, Counselor McLaughlin, if the President, all right. I got to say, I think everybody's disturbed. I just had a quick question of the Chair. So did I understand correctly that you weren't able to take votes to award scholarships because the meeting was canceled?
And other items as well, yes.
Okay, and these are scholarships for Somerville High students?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that seems like a thing that we'd want to do as a city. Did I understand that you said that you haven't been allowed to schedule another meeting since that one?
We were told that we might be able to. I don't know if you want to speak to this, but.
I just wanted to understand if it was that the city was not allowing access to the rooms to have a meeting. I think as the Chair of, as the President, you can call meetings the City Council. As the Chairs of Committees, we can schedule meetings of our committees. I would imagine commissions operate the same way and don't need the permission of city staff. They just need to be publicly posted. So I, if the problem is that the city is unwilling to give you a room to have a meeting in, I've got a room you can have a meeting in. I think it's fairly shameful that it would have to devolve to that. But I personally would like the scholarships to go to the Somerville High School students. So if I can help make that happen, I'm happy to make that offer.
I believe there's a process in place for that. But with our situation right now, we do not have a liaison that we can speak to, to schedule a meeting.
Maybe the city clerk can help, but I don't know.
I have Matt, Counselor McLaughlin up next.
Thank you, Madam President. I read the email. I did not watch the video. But I, so I don't want to speak to that specific instance. But I could talk historically about this because this isn't the first time that the Disabilities Commission specifically has had issues like this in the past. And the allegations, I will say, I was not there for it. But, you know, there were situations where people claimed an entire building was shut down and they weren't allowed to have their meetings in those areas. And then also other buildings, just issues like that in the past, predating the RSJ Department as well. And I think it does, like, what I'm mostly curious about is all of our commissions and how they're facilitated. So, you know, I sit on the Job Retention Trust Fund, or did sit on it. I'd have to check the agenda again. But, you know, sometimes we have these meetings where it's like, and they're far less dramatic than this, but we're like, who's running this meeting right now? We have a Chair, a Vice Chair, and then we have a city staff person who really seems to decide when we meet and how we meet. And then, of course, the Public Safety Building Committee that I sit on. Sometimes I'm there, I'm like, why are we meeting right now? Like, who decided that we should be having a meeting when we don't really have anything to talk about? So it's an issue about, you know, who's running the meeting? Is it the commission? Is it the city? And again, I don't want to put allegations out there at all. But, you know, I would say it's kind of like as if our clerk decided she didn't want to have a meeting and canceled the meeting. Like, I don't like what I'm hearing, so this meeting's canceled. Our clerk can't do that because it's understood that, like, she works for the council. So who works for who in this situation? I'm just putting it out there, and I don't want to make any accusations. But it's always been a point of contention to me. And I do understand, too, there are some efficiency issues, too, that maybe volunteers can't coordinate every single meeting. But it does seem to be that the commissions should be able to conduct their business, even if a city staff person is not there.
On that point, we have Counselor Kling.
Yeah, on that point, Madam Chair. A few weeks ago, I put an order in asking for a sort of definition clarification on the committee liaison, since we've had a new, entirely new process rolled out with regards to multi-member bodies. I thought it important to define these roles specifically because that maybe 90% of the committees run the same way. But there are a few commissions, rather, but there are a few commissions that may run a little bit different depending on things. So I, you know, I know that went to appointments and confirmations committees. So I hope that'll help clarify to what Counselor McLaughlin to some degree when we have that discussion. But I just wanted to note that, thanks.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. Really glad we're talking big picture here about this. This has been something, as was mentioned, that's been brewing for a long time. The Chair and I have discussed the issue of the policies around this. You know, there should be a holistic plan for how this all works because it's so murky, the idea that, you know, a staff liaison could unilaterally end a meeting. You know, we all chair meetings here. We're familiar with adjournment processes and open meeting law. It just strikes me as, I'll say, suboptimal that a staff liaison can do that. So, yeah, big-picture-wise, there should be, and I'll call on the administration. Come out with clear policies and protocols and procedures for how these multi-member bodies do everything from put together agendas and post them to how these meetings are run, you know, to how the videos are posted, right? You know, we found this video on YouTube. You know, as someone who's gone and looked for videos of these multi-member body meetings, they can be incredibly difficult to find. Minutes can be very difficult to find. We need some uniformity here. We need clarity. And in the short term, I would say that the relationship between this particular multi-member body and the department that oversees them appears to be very broken. I think it's been that way for a while. I think there's a real need for mediation. And I would call on the administration to look into mediation here to make sure that they can do that work and that there's a healthy relationship here between a really essential body that, you know, must exist.
exist. By law, it must exist, and they do really important work. They're doing work to, they should not be viewed as a headache for the city. They're doing work that saves us, saves us from, you know, that makes sure that we're honoring our legal and moral obligations to the people in our city who most need that assistance. And I just think it's critical that we get this right. Thanks.
I have Counselor Said, then Counselor Shrezo up next.
Through you, Madam President. First, I want to say I'm sorry to all the volunteers on this commission that you had to go through that. But I'm hearing a few things. I'm glad we're having the conversation about, like, how do these commissions function? Who's making the rules? What are the policies and the protocols? So, it would be great to have that shared with the council. I think another thing that I heard from the Chair is they would like to have a meeting. So, it's been exactly a week. Information is being gathered, maybe a plan for mediation, whatever that is. Can we have a commitment from the administration that there will be a meeting in the next week, something like that? Because a meeting needs to happen. So, can the administration speak to that? Because that's the request I'm hearing from the Chair here.
Director Singh, do you want to respond?
Through the President, Counselor, thank you for that question. I can't commit to a timeline without speaking to the relevant departments, but I can commit to the fact that we are, we will ensure that the, the next meeting of this commission is able to proceed without any disruptions or interruptions. So, we'll definitely work with the Chair of this commission to ensure that.
Through you, Madam President. My only question to actually the Chair, the item about the scholarships, is that time-sensitive? Is it time-sensitive? Or will you...
Yes, and we would need to have a location, and I would need to...
Can you speak into the mic?
I'm so sorry. We would need to have a location for the agenda, and I need to be able to confirm quorum. And the applications will be coming early next week, and we need to turn them around quickly. But we also voted for members, which I'm not sure if that was, for offices, I'm not sure if that was even a valid vote because they removed my agenda from the city's website for a day until I added a report onto it that they wanted on there. And I did such thing as adding it on so that I could have a meeting. But I have tried to explain that the Chair sets the agenda, and I'm always open to all of our members who'd like to have something discussed. But it's very hostile and it's very uncomfortable, and it shouldn't feel like that. You shouldn't feel like you're doing something wrong. And, you know, we've had problems with our minutes. We've asked for an accommodation, an ADA accommodation, if someone else take the minutes because it's very hard for persons with disabilities to take the minutes and be in the meeting. And we've also had problems with minutes not being posted or being posted that don't say drafts. And we have this terrible obstacle right now. Instead of someone being hired that was a third party, we've had different people who've done the minutes and they're not accurate. Even the minutes that were posted along with the video are not accurate. And it is a tedious job to go back over that, but we need to have these records. But it's, it's, it's many obstacles, and I, again, I really wish this could have been resolved outside of this process here. And I, I'm hopeful that someone will help us find a place to meet that's suitable and that things will align because we have other events that we need to hold.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, just through you, Madam President, I think what LaCendre will say, just urge the administration to work with the commission members on finding a location and helping them schedule a meeting as soon as possible. Thank you.
Counselor Shrezo.
Madam President, through you to Counselor Said. You like read my mind. I was going, I was going the direct path you were, like, she got it, she got it, she got it, spot on, right on. That's because that's exactly where we're going with this. First off, the fact that, pardon me, Madam President, through you to Commissioner Simeoni, you can't actually schedule the meetings in places. It's the responsibility of the liaison. How do I know that? Because I was a commissioner for many years. I was the Chair of the Women's Commission. And yeah, I get it. It's a really difficult position because you have all these things you want to do. You're reliant upon the liaison to be responsive, timely, and give you accurate information. And I am in no way going to be talking about personnel issues here in this meeting. However, you, the commissioners are responsible for setting the agenda, and it is, it is the job of the liaison to carry that out. And I know that with meetings, it's, it's complicated because we're all competing for space throughout the city. And then you're also responsible for, you know, abiding by open meeting law, getting the agenda up in time and out to the public. So, yes, I, I, I'm very frustrated in the fact that it's been a full week, we're still talking about this. I have seen no responses yet on the location, and yes, there is the, there is the Red Sox game as well tickets that if, because the Disability Commission every year, by the way, puts forward a great Red Sox. And I'm not trying to speak for you, Madam Chair, through you to Commissioner Simeoni, that, Chair Simeoni, that, that you're doing it this year, but you have in previous years. As I recall, that happens in May. I remember last year it was a huge production, and you got this huge megabus. I don't know how you pulled it out of the air, but you did. And it was a huge, complicated process. We are in almost the last month of March, as I recall. I don't know, the days are kind of blurring together. And the, the Red Sox tickets alone, I believe, were released this week, today's opening And with that, those are timely decisions aside from the scholarships. So, I, I would like to bring our liaison, our, our Mayor's Office liaison, pardon me, I'm so sorry, it's late. Director Singh to, to speak, Madam Chair, through you, to really, to come back and drive, drive the point about a meeting and why this is... I'm sorry, I have to discuss this. Director Singh, it's, it's been a week and a half, and, and these are very, very timely issues. I was a commissioner once. Madam Chair, through you, to, to Director Singh, I was a commissioner once. And the, when, when you apply to be a commissioner, you're told that it's about five hours of volunteer work. It's a volunteer position. And this city runs on our commissioners who's, who just, they have a passion and they have a board or commission that that's their drive, and that is their, that is their work. Mine was women's issues. We worked on domestic violence prevention and all kinds of great stuff, car seat checks. It was like the sky's the limit. It was fun to do these cool things and improve the community. She, Director, Commissioner Simeoni, she doesn't have to be here today. It's 10:20 PM, but she cares enough to be here and discuss this because she wants to come to committee and she wants to make these meetings and these events happen. It's all free work for the city, and it's all free PR, free marketing. It makes the city looks great. So, why after almost, it's been a week at this point, why do we still not have any action, no communication, no set emergency meeting to, to get back to planning this? I, I'm sorry, I, I can't believe one of these boilerplate answer responses anymore. I, I just, I need some decisions. So, can you please commit to having a meeting set tomorrow's Friday? So, I know everyone, you know, ships out by 12:30 PM by Monday.
Through the President, thank you for that question. Counselor, first I just want to, I, I just want to flag, I share your appreciation for the work that this commission does, and I, and I want to acknowledge your frustration, and I, please know that I will take that back to the relevant departments. I will have to work with the department to ensure that we're able to schedule a meeting in a timely manner. I know that there are open meeting requirements with 48-hour agenda postings, so I am unable to commit to a date tonight. I will, I will commit to working with the Chair and the commission and the relevant departments internally to expedite and prioritize this request.
Madam President, through you, to Director Singh, pardon me. Thank you, thank you very much. I am not, I, I don't want to hear any more words, I just want to see the action from the administration. And I will know that this is a priority and a genuine concern if I see that. And I'm not going to get into personnel issues, but sometimes relationships and, and sometimes there's just not a match between hearts. And sometimes it's just, we have to just agree that maybe we just weren't a good team together, and whatever that looks like, go on and, and love again, but I wish you the best in life, and you go the best in life, and we can still exist in the same sphere, but maybe not talking to each other at this very second in time, whatever. But restorative justice, I'm not sure how you work that out. So, you have a few issues to deal with at the same time, but there needs to be conversations happening and action steps happening, like post haste, please, I ask you, Director Singh. Please.
Thank you. We have Counselor Ewan Kimbent up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not, not much to say that hasn't been said already. I just wanted to speak directly to the commissioners. I spent a bunch of last week on the phone. I have several constituents who, who serve on this commission. It was really painful to hear their experience of this meeting and ones before that. These are folks who just, they volunteer their time to, to serve on this commission, and, you know, what they have been experiencing, this is just really heartbreaking. And I think has been made clear, you know, if we don't hear a satisfactory response from the administration by our next meeting, I think this will unfortunately have to be an even longer conversation.
I see Counselor Davis has your hand up.
Thank you, yeah, and I just want to echo the Counselor colleagues, and just like to sign on. Thank you.
Okay. Another comment? Counselor Kling would like, oh, you were saying Counselor Davis would like to sign, and Counselor Kling would like to sign on. Counselor Said would like to sign on, the whole Counsel would like to sign on. Counselor Burnley, comment?
Thank you, through the Chair. I'm very grateful for the words and for the co-sponsorship of my colleagues. Frankly, I didn't expect to have a, a long discussion about this item. I was hoping, you know, just to sponsor a few folks who are impacted and just send this to committee because as multiple members of this body have mentioned, this is a personnel matter and should be discussed in CAPM, Committee for Personnel Matters, perhaps in an executive session, but certainly I think in CAPM, so I'd, I'd like to send it there because I think there are some real questions about if procedures were violated in this situation and how we can actually move forward to pair the commission with either a department or a city staff member that they can work positively with. And as has been noted, this is not the first time that this discussion has been had, this is not the first Chair of the Commission for Persons with Disabilities that has had this discussion with the council. So, I'd just like to see us move forward, and I can, I, I hope with your permission that the CAPM can be a, a space for this conversation to continue.
We can send this to CAPM. Counselor McLaughlin.
Real quick, Chair, Madam President, so I want to keep this conversation going, I want to support it. I guess I, before I sign on, I should say, I'm personally not certain if removing it from RSJ is the answer, just because I don't know. I just want to make that understood.
Okay. All right, let's send this to CAPM. Madam Clerk, thank you. Next item, I think that...
And that, Madam President, is going to return us to the regular order of business.
All right, let's start our meeting, folks.
And item...
Settle in.
Item 4.1.
Get cozy. Oh, Madam Clerk, mm-mm, let's waive the readings of 4, 1, 2, 4, 3, and 4, yep, and send those to school buildings, facilities, and maintenance. And Counsel, or Counselor Wilson?
Madam President, can I sign on to 4, 3, please?
Yep, and Counselor Wilson would like to sign on. 4.4, Madam Clerk, we have a duplicate item that was just discussed in Housing and Community Development, so let's approve this item tonight. And 4, 5, we can place on file, waive the reading and place on file. Counselor Said.
I would like to sign on to 4.4.
Madam President? Great, we'll have Counselor Said sign on to 4.4. 4, 6, 4, 12, 4, 14, 4, 15. Am I missing any? We will place on file the copy sent to Finance. And next item, Madam Clerk, which brings us, I think, to 4, 7.
Item 4.7 is in order by Counselor Ba, that the Director of Housing include a line item contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust's fiscal year 2026 ordinary maintenance budget in order to sustain its funding for affordable housing development and assistance to households facing rent or mortgage arrears.
Counselor Ba.
Most of my items should be waived and sent, you know, to Finance, and then the, the only one that should be...
Okay, so we will, we will send this item to Finance, we'll waive 4, 8, and 4, 9, send them to Finance, and we should read 4, 10, please.
Item 4, 10 is in order by Counselor Ba, that the Director of the Office of Immigrant Affairs provide this City Council with regular updates of its operations.
Counselor Ba.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Again, due to the recent activities that are happening every day, it would be nice that we get regular updates, you know, about the works of this office. Thank you.
Would you like to send this to Equity?
I think it would be nice for, for the Director to come before the Council, so just approve it.
Oh, okay, that item's approved, placed on file.
Thank you.
Approved, yeah. Item 4.11 is a resolution by Counselor Ba, that the administration work with the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management and Commissioner of Public Works to accelerate maintenance schedules, invest in preventative repairs, and develop a clear contingency plan for school displacement.
Counselor Ba.
Send to Committee, like, the Finance?
School building facilities.
School building facilities?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
We'll send that to school building facilities?
Thank you.
And 4, 16, Madam Clerk, we're going to lay on the table for our next meeting.
That brings us to item 5.2, a request of the Mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Henry Lima to the position of firefighter.
Counselor Ewan Kimbent.
Madam President, items 5, 2 to 5, 9, I'd like to move for approval. The paperwork is done.
Congratulations. Do we need a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Need to know.
Okay, those items are approved. Next item.
All right. Item 6A is a report of the Charter Review Special Committee, meeting as a committee of the whole on March 18th, 2025.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. Also, just want to mark the occasion of Henry Lima's hiring to the position of firefighter in the city. So, but going on to the Charter Review Special Committee, we met as committee of the whole. It was a very productive meeting, and in the end, after amending that report, after the recommendations that have come back from colleagues and a great deal of work, we were left with a document that it was ready to go, mostly. So, I would like us to accept the report and then before voting on the home rule petition language, to make a brief amendment, which I will speak to in a moment, which is expected, but I just want to make sure to explain it. This is the conclusion of a far-too-long process. And from this point, as explained in the meeting, for members of the public who might still be watching at 10:30 at night, this will go to the Mayor. If approved tonight, this will go to the Mayor for signature. If approved by the Mayor, it will go to the Legislature for consideration. If approved by the Legislature, it will return to the city to be on the municipal ballot as a ballot question of whether or not to accept this text as the new charter for the city of Somerville. Don't know if that'll all happen before this November's election, but like the Red Sox say, there's always next year. So, I believe the correct order of operations here is to accept the report, and then we have the home rule petition before us, and then I'll be able to move for amendment at that point. So, at this point, I will ask that the report be accepted as submitted. So at this point, I will ask that the report be accepted as submitted.
Any discussion on that? Do we need to roll call? Let's roll call.
On the report of the Charter Review Special Committee meeting of March 18th, 2025, Counselor Mbah, Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon. Counselor Davis. Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
With eight counselors in favor and three absent, that committee report is approved. And that does put item 25-0482 proposing a home rule petition to establish a charter for the city of Somerville before this council.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. The amendment in question is an amendment to Section 9-1B. For those who are looking at their numbered, line item numbered copy that is attached to this item, that's around line number 873 on page 32. I know, thrilling stuff. But in substance, this is clearing up the question that members of the committee had about removing the fire chief from civil service, or ensuring that the proper positions that are supposed to remain in civil service do so, as opposed to being inadvertently removed by the text of the charter. As far as I know, nobody still knows where this text came from, but the administration voiced no objection to it. And I have the language of that that was prepared by Analyst Salisbury and run by the Law Department. So that is to modify the, I want to make sure I say this right, to amend the second sentence by striking the language, "Uniform positions within the Police Department below the rank of Chief of the Department, and the uniform positions within the Fire Department shall continue to be subject to said Chapter 31." That's striking that entire sentence and replacing it with these two sentences. "Uniform positions within the Police Department below the rank of Deputy Chief shall continue to be subject to said Chapter 31. All uniform positions within the Fire Department, except the Assistant Chief position and the employees serving in such capacity, shall continue to be subject to said Chapter I know, it's the smallest change, and I know we're all ready to vote on this and move on, but if my colleagues could support me in just making this minor change, I'd appreciate it.
Questions, discussion on that motion? Okay, let's take a roll on the motion to amend.
On the amendment of Section 9-1B of the proposed charter, Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis. Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor and one absent, that amendment is approved, and that now puts the home rule petition to establish a charter for the city of Somerville as amended before this council.
Any discussion on that item? Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. The hour is late, I wanted to thank so many people, but one, it's late, and two, I don't know what's going to happen. Do I dare ask our liaison where the Mayor's at on this, if we can get it approved, what the timeline is to get it to the State House?
Director Singh, would you like to speak to that?
Through the Chair, thank you for that question, Counselor. I know there were significant substantive changes, we have not finished a review of those changes, and we'd also like to have the Law Department review the changes before we send it to the Legislature.
Is Mr. Salisbury here, or anybody who can talk about the timeline for when, when's the latest we can get this to the State House?
Is there anyone who can speak to that? We have Brendan Salisbury, yes.
Oh, yeah, well, Brendan's here, that's, I can let him answer it.
Okay. Brendan.
Good afternoon, or good evening, good night, whatever it is, Counselors, my apologies, Madam President, through you. My understanding from conversations with the Collins Center was that we are already kind of up against the deadline for reasonably getting this through the State House process, and then being able to get it on to the ballot at the end of this year. So the hour is late.
Can we, is it like an actual date? Like, when, well, when's the latest? Counselor Scott might have an...
Unfortunately, Madam President?
Yeah, Counselor Scott.
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, through you, there's, we are already past the deadline for filing bills, so this is really informal session stuff, there's no set. But certainly, any delay in the process makes it less likely that it will appear on this year's ballot, which would mean it would have to wait another two years.
Okay. Just one more question for our liaison. Is there an estimated timeline for when we think the solicitor will be able to peruse this document that's already been perused, that has not really had that many significant changes in my mind?
Director Singh.
Through the President, Counselor, I don't have a timeline to shed at this moment.
Pretty pleased, let's get this done this year. I'll stop, I do, I guess I'm going to thank people really quickly, just everyone who actually worked on this from the public, and this entire council, just want to thank a few people specifically, you know, Counselor Scott for chairing this committee and seeing it through to its finish line, and Counselor Ewan Campen, and Counselor Davis for, really, especially Counselor Davis for just going through this with his lawyer comb. We already had a lawyer look at it, I know Counselor Davis will tell you that he's a lawyer, and this counts, so, but thank you all for actually seeing this through, I just hope that we can get it done this year and have it on the ballot. Sounds like there's going to be a lot of things on the ballot this year, and this is one that I would love to get overwhelming support for from the community there.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President, I'll be quick, it's late, this is years of work, absolute years of work by the community, a lot of work by this council. Let's get this thing reviewed, let's get it signed, let's get it sent to Beacon Hill to give us a chance to get it on the ballot this year.
Any other discussion? All right, are we ready to take a roll?
On the home rule petition as amended, Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis. Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that home rule petition is approved as amended.
Congratulations, colleagues. Next item.
To adjourn.
Do we have a second?
The next item then is item 6C, a report of the Committee on Land Use, meeting in joint session with the Planning Board on March 20th, 2025.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Madam President, I've only begun to ramble. All right, we met at that time, it was a good meeting. I'll note that this was the first in-person public testimony we had in the Land Use Committee since COVID, and the first ever hybrid meeting we had, where people could both testify remotely and in person. We were at capacity in this building, and we had about 90 people remotely, and I don't know how many people testified, but it was a lot. We took up one item, which is an affordable housing project on Medford Street, on the corner of Medford and another street. So I'll read it, no, it's not, it's not here, but, Medford and Walnut, thank you. Lot of people testified in support, I think it's a seven-story building, 100% affordable, in a currently vacant lot. Some people testified against it, noting the height in particular, and the change to the community. A lot of people testified in support of it. So this item was left in committee, and then, of course, we took up the big Summer Nova proposal, which was four independent amendments specific towards Summer Nova. A lot of people testified to this, of course, mixed bag of people, both for and against it. What I'd say is, both people for and against it testified about the need for a community benefits agreement. That seemed to be a real sticking point for everyone, regardless of whether they supported the project or not. So these items are going to remain in committee. I don't have these items scheduled yet, because they need to go to the Planning Board for review, but I did want to put out another announcement, that, you know, we have our new legislative, or land use analyst, Samantha Carr, who I've been meeting with and has attended some of these meetings, and I just want to put out to the public and to this council, that we've been meeting to talk about citywide upzoning, which is something I've talked about for many years, and we finally have someone with the knowledge and time and ability to help us with this. I've decided to start hosting land use committee meetings every other Thursday, when we're not meeting for the full council. So these will be regular committee meetings, where we're just going to start spitballing our ideas, and start talking publicly about what we want to see happen, what we'd like, what we don't like. Our next meeting, I believe, is scheduled for April 3rd, make sure, April 3rd, where Ms. Carr is going to show us examples of other cities and how they upzoned around transit, as well as places like Cambridge, and, as, and previous upzoning maps for the city of Somerville that did not make it to the final product that we currently have. So I was going to be very excited, I'm going to be, it's going to be regular committee for now, but we'll discuss these items, we're going to try to not take votes until we actually have a proposal to give to people, and I'll report back at every full council meeting, and people not on the committee can give us their input, and Ms. Carr can incorporate that as well, and then when we finally have something real and substantial, we can have the whole council on that. So I submit this committee report to be approved.
All right, Madam Clerk, let's take a roll. Oh, we, we're going to lay this one on the table. Next item.
Item 6D is a report of the Committee on Public Health and Public Safety, meeting on March 19th, 2025.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President, we did meet at that time, it was a good meeting, mostly revolved around sanctuary cities and our status, dealing with immigrant issues in the community. We talked about a lot of it today, and I'm sure all of you are aware, but we really had a great conversation with the Somerville Office of Immigrant Affairs Director, Teresa, Maria Teresa Nagal, who outlined, one, what a sanctuary city is, what it isn't, because we wanted to dispel the myths that people think a sanctuary city is, it basically means we're not going to do the federal government's job, but we're also not going to get in their way, we can't interfere in what they're doing, as unfortunately, we've seen in recent events. But we also outlined a lot of resources that we have, particularly lawyers, legal assistance to people going through immigration issues. I was very impressed by the amount of people they've helped, about 27 people a year, which they continue to follow through per year. They've mentioned a lack, a need for more lawyers, as well as accredited representatives. The nonprofit organizations can accredit people, and they're basically like a step below a lawyer, a legal assistance for someone who needed help. Most people can do this if they want, we also have people bringing food to people in need, who people have lost a provider in their, in their family. And that was a good conversation, great to have, a lot of information we already know, but I'm hoping we got out to the public. And let me see, we also had several other items that I will leave to report the committee approved, to approve the committee report as submitted. Good conversations, all, check it out.
All right, can we lay that item on the table for approval? Next item.
Item 6E is a report of the Committee on Traffic and Parking, meeting on March 24th, 2025.
Counselor Said.
Through you, Madam President, the Traffic and Parking Committee met with all three members present, all items were marked as completed. Regarding the orders 2, 12, 13, and 14, requesting that mobility design measures to improve safety at Summer Street and Porter Street, at the intersection of Columbus Ave and Prospect Hill Parkway, and install speed humps on North Street and on Elmwood Street, Director Rawson said that all these locations will be added to the Mobility Department's priority list. We have received an update from the Director of Engineering on the construction of the Lowell Street crosswalk and the School Street crosswalk facing the Green Line stations. The Director reported that the city has engaged a consultant to work on both Lowell Street and School Street crossings. Both of these projects are on MassDOT bridges, currently, the projects are in the data collection phase, and the design option should be ready in the late spring or early summer following that. There will be meetings with MassDOT for a final solution. If everything goes perfectly, and plans are approved by MassDOT, this could be constructed sometime in 2026. However, it's more likely that MassDOT will require additional adjustments, so a more realistic timeline for construction would be during the summer of 2027. The Chief of Police will be increasing traffic enforcement at the intersection of Broadway and Medford Street, and on Otis Street during school drop-off and pickup times, and at the exit on Highland Ave and Vinyl Ave. There were a bunch of items related to McGoon Square, so I'm going to try to be quick there, we learned that shortening the cycle time of the traffic light at the intersection of Medford Street and Lowell Street is not possible. Apparently, signal cycle lengths are determined by the amount of time required to cross a street using the longest pedestrian crosswalk. The signal at this intersection interacts with the signal at the intersection of Broadway and Medford Street, so changing one affects the other. Adjusting only the lower one will cause more problems at the Broadway-Medford Street And regarding the bollards that were knocked down by the truck at the intersection of Broadway-Medford Street, it will be replaced when the temperature is consistently above 40 degrees. Director Infret reported that the signs prohibiting parking during snow emergencies on Otis Street have been in place for two years, and that new "do not block driveway" signage has been added. The Director of Parking placed the "no idling" signs on the new Washington Street behind the Cobble Hill complex. Another update, installing the traffic signal light at the end of Woods Ave and Elway Brook Parkway. Director Bostaway explained that this is not a city street, therefore, the city does not have jurisdiction, the matter needs to be taken to DCR and that the city-state delegation for action. The Director commented that technically, it's doable, and there are no red flags, but the state would have to pull the needed resources together, and that's more challenging. Another item we discussed is the effectiveness of speed cushions as a traffic calming measure and potential applications on key fire department response routes. Director Rawson explained that these are speed humps with cutouts that could allow vehicles with wider wheelbases to go through those cutouts. The city has thought about these as a treatment, and has always planned speed humps in consultation with the Fire Department. We discussed briefly the citywide parking and curb use study, more specifically, the revising the parking fee, and this is not something that the Traffic and Parking Department can do, yeah, so there was a brief discussion about that. With that, I ask that this committee report be approved as submitted.
We have two questions, I think Counselor Burnley, and then Counselor Wilson.
I thought you were saying you wanted to ask a question first. Through you, I just wanted to do a quick clarification, actually, for the Chair, who's, you know, or one of my, you know, one of the favorite, one of my favorite Ward 5 city counselors I've ever worked with. Just really quickly on those streets, including Elmwood, though Director Rawson said that he was going to put those proposals on the evaluation list, not the priority list, just want to be very clear about that, because they have to go through an extensive process to see if it makes sense for there to be traffic calming there, and there is a priority list that is, I don't want to say longstanding, but has had a lot of work put into it, so I just wanted to be clear about that.
Through you, Madam President, yeah, thank you for that first evaluation and then priority. Yes, it's a long process, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you for the clarification, my constituents might be listening in to this committee report, so, Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. Our Traffic and Parking Chair mentioned the discussion on the order for enforcement in McGoon Square. I had piled onto a whole slew of issues with a report of a car that I keep seeing parked in the intersection every morning. I want to give a shout-out to Deputy Chief Donovan for bringing this back to the traffic unit, and then for Lieutenant Riemel for following up with me no fewer than three times about this, including just today, when you followed up to say the situation has been dealt with, so. been dealt with. So credit where credit's due.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, let's lay that committee report on the table for approval. Next item.
Item 7.1 is a request of the mayor, requesting ordainment of an amendment to Chapter 12, Article 6 of the Code of Ordinances, to modify the tree preservation ordinance.
Let's send that to Legislative Matters.
Item 7.2 is a request of the mayor, requesting ordainment of an amendment to Articles 2 through 5 and 10 of the zoning ordinance to remove conflicts with the state building code.
Send that to Land Use, the copy to the Planning Board.
Item 7.3 is a request of the mayor, requesting ordainment of an amendment to Article 2 of the zoning ordinance to allow the building official to waive certain dimensional standards for means of egress.
Send that to Land Use, the copy to the Planning Board. Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, I'd like to move to waive the readings of Agenda Items 7, 4 to 7, 12, and ask that those be sent to Finance.
Items will be sent to Finance. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Madam President, I would like to waive the readings of 7, 13 to 7, 18, and send those items to committee, and waive the readings of 7, 19 to 7, 21, and lay those on the table for approval tonight, please.
Great. Did you get that, Madam Clark?
Yep.
Counselor Burnley?
If we're waiving readings, I'll just, you know, I'd love to waive the readings of Items 9.1 through 9.35, and 10.12 through 10.34, and ask that those be approved.
Okay, we will approve those, lay them on the table for approval, and I think that brings us to 8.1.
It does. That will bring us back to Item 8.1, an officer's communication from the city solicitor conveying an amendment to the Law Department's response to Laura Ortiz's open meeting law complaint of January 11th, 2025.
We will place that item on file. Can we, y'all okay if we waive the readings of the next two items, place that on file? Okay. Madam Clark, next item.
Item 8.5 is an officer's communication from the Planning Board conveying recommendations for Item 24-1584.
We'll place that on, item on file, the copy to Land Use.
Next item then is Item 9.37, a public communication from M. Michael Shapps submitting comments regarding Item 25-0474 condemning attacks on disability rights.
We will place that item on file and waive the readings of 9, 38 and 9, 39, and place those items on file. Next item.
Item 10.1 is an order by Counselors Said, Wilson, and McLaughlin that the Director of Parks and Recreation and the Commissioner of Public Works update this council on the continued closure of Jenny Smithers Sanders' pool and address the lack of communication with users of the pool.
So colleagues, that item is already on the agenda for our School Buildings, Facilities and Maintenance Committee on Monday, so there's a duplicate item there. So instead of sending it to committee, are you all okay, I guess Counselor Said, since you sponsored this item, to just approve this tonight, knowing there's an item already in committee for discussion Monday?
Through you, Madam President. Does it mention the lack of communication? I have to go back to if the Parks and Rec Director can be there, and we can discuss that part of the issue, I am okay with that.
Yes, I believe it does mention. Director Singh, do you want to respond to this?
Through the President, we can adjust the communication issue that you raised in your item when we provide an update at the meeting next week.
Yeah, I know that meeting is not happening. Is it happening next week? I don't know when is the next meeting, but my request here, after receiving so many emails about this, is once again, there is no communication to pool users about the closure, or why, how long it'll take. Like, my sign is starting in swim classes on Saturday. I've never received any communication from Parks or Recs about it. Like, I only know about it because, you know, of all the emails I received. So I think there's like a major issue there. So a lot of the emails I'm receiving from my constituents are saying, can we just, can the department just reach out to us with an email saying it's closed for this reason, it will be closed for, you know, this long, so please communicate that to the director, because I don't think it can wait until the meeting, the school building meeting happens.
Through the President, I do believe, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but I do believe a meeting is scheduled for next week, but we will definitely provide an update on the concern that you raised.
Thank you. Monday. Yes. Counselor McLaughlin.
Madam President, did you say that there's already an item in the public, in the School Building Committee, right?
It's in the School Building Facilities Committee.
I would suggest to just send this there anyways, even though it's a duplicate, we can get it, get them both taken care of.
We can, we can just send that, send it on to committee, and we can take them both up together. Okay. Madam Clark, let's waive the readings of 10, 2, 10, 4, 10, 6, 10, 11, and place on file the copy to Finance, please.
And sorry, remind me, are we just approving 10, 1?
We are going to, to send that to School Buildings, School Buildings, Facilities and Maintenance.
The next item then is Item 10.3, a resolution by Counselors Wilson, Pineda Newfeld, and Klingon, supporting permanent daylight saving time.
Spiciest part of the agenda. Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, now the real meeting can begin.
Let's do it.
I have eight members of the public I'd like to, no.
I have four.
All right. Seriously, Madam President, who doesn't hate having to change their clocks twice a year? If you think you hate changing your clocks, imagine how parents of young children feel about the entire situation. Springing forward, falling back, it's a ridiculous thing we do every year, despite the fact it enjoys a level of popularity on par with Congress and telemarketers. Despite the negative impacts it has on quality of life, public safety, productivity, we just keep doing it. But speaking of Congress, there's once again that unicorn of a bipartisan bill on Capitol Hill to end the madness. Our own Senator Markey had introduced the Sunshine Protection Act in 2022, and now that bill's been refiled by colleagues in the Senate, so let's put the council's voice behind something that definitely would improve things for Somervilleians, permanent daylight savings time. No more 4:15 sunsets in December. A better world is possible. Thanks.
A better world is possible. Any other discussion? That item is laid on the table for approval.
Madam.
Oh, Counselor Klingon.
I would just urge all of my colleagues to sign on to this item. We want to send this, we want to send a serious message. This is a serious issue. Any takers? Okay.
Counselor McLaughlin.
I'm a skier, so I don't know how I feel about this.
Okay, Madam Clark, I think we're on to the next item. Oh, yes, we, do we need a roll call on this, folks?
No.
Okay, let's approve it. Let's lay it on the table for approval.
Item 10.5 is a communication by Counselor Wilson in his capacity as Chair of the Finance Committee, conveying information on the fiscal year 2026 budget review process.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, it's late. No one's going to really listen to anything I say here, so just read the memo. You're going to have questions about it. Hit me up. I'm here for it. Just want to really stress, Director Mastaboni pointed out that the date for releasing the budget is, I won't say aspirational, it's a goal, really aiming to have it out the Friday before Memorial Day, going to do whatever they can do to get it out. Might not be that date, but that's, that's the goal. The second thing is, please hit those deadlines for submitting your questions, so that those memos can get back to us ahead of meetings in a timely fashion, where we can then have meaningful meetings about that. So it's different. Read about it. Hit me up if you have questions.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. And one note that's not in here is our special joint committee with the School Committee, where we get a financial outlook ahead of budget season, is scheduled for April 16th, so mark your calendar. Next item.
Item 10.7 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the Chief of Police convey all outstanding reports as required by Section 2-6G of the Code of Ordinances.
Counselor Burnley, there's a similar item in Public Health and Public Safety. Are you okay with sending it there, or just approving it tonight?
I'm okay with it being sent there. It's on the same, it's on the Welcoming Communities Ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Just through you, just to speak on this a little bit, just to rehash the context, Welcoming Communities Ordinance requires that the Chief of Police, every six months, send a memo essentially saying how many ICE requests for detainers, arrests, et cetera, the SPD receives, how many people have been taken, all these things, and more. And that has not happened since 2023. To be fair, we've, in 2023, we were going through a chief process, and in 2024, we're going through a chief process, and 2025, we're going through a chief process, and I've spoken to the chief about this directly, and he has acknowledged that that information was not being monitored during that period, it seems. They, the information is, we still do have that information, and that they will, they will be working to collect it and, one, actually get back in compliance sometime in June with a new report, but also, and this is my request, to fill us in on the gaps that we have with our reports by letting us know during the last, you know, two years, what communication or collaboration has happened between SPD and ICE.
So we will send that to Public Health and Public Safety. Counselor McLaughlin.
Yeah, just for an update on that, basically, similar to what Counselor Burnley said, I submitted an order about this, I think, a few meetings ago, and the Deputy Chief basically told me the same thing, just an additional part is like because of our lack of cooperation, it's kind of difficult to get information about detainers, and we also don't want to put out information that people may not want to put out. So it is in committee. I'm happy to take this one up as well, and hopefully that we'll get some answers soon, especially now after what's happened. We really want to follow it. I also think in our Public Health and Safety Committee, the Director Sawyer mentioned that they also track things like this as well, so hopefully there'll be some crossover of information.
Okay, we'll send that to Public Health and Public Safety. Next item.
Item 10.8 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the Director of Mobility speak with this council regarding the Safe Streets Ordinance 2025 annual report.
Counselor Burnley.
Thanks. I think this is pretty self-explanatory. I'd like this to go to Traffic and Parking. The one thing I'll say is, I am very proud of the Safe Streets Ordinance. I'm very excited, and I know that about it, and I know that there are many members of the public who have been monitoring it very closely, including the first reporting deadline, which happened at basically the beginning of this month, for the annual report that says how many bicycle miles, protected bicycle miles, we've constructed in the previous year, how many we plan to do this year, and how many we plan to do the following year, as well as where. That report, it has been submitted, and it was submitted on time by Director Rosson, which I'm very grateful for. I just think it's important that we don't just get the information, but that we have substantive conversation about any shortfalls, how we plan to actually build this road, not, no pun intended, toward street safety. So I'd love for that to go to Traffic and Parking, so we can talk about it.
Okay, we'll send it to Traffic and Parking. Next item.
Item 10.10 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs coordinate with departments to assess which federal grants are likely to not be available in fiscal year 2026, and discuss with this council the potential impact on programs and services.
Counselor Burnley.
Through the Chair, thank you. I will not ask Director Singh to walk anymore tonight, but I will just ask that this gets sent to Finance, so that we can, hopefully, we can have this discussion. It might, I understand it's a complicated request, but it is one I think we need to be looking into.
Okay, we'll send that item to Finance. Next item.
Item 10.35 is a public communication from the Pedestrian and Transit Advisory Committee, submitting comments regarding snow clearing.
We will place that item on file, and we will waive the readings of 10.36, 10.37, and place those items on file.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda for the evening.
Any late items, Madam Clark?
Everyone's favorite question.
Edge of our seats.
There are no further items before this council.
All right, we need to take some items off the table?
We do indeed. On approval of Items 1.3, 2.1, 3.1 to 3.2, 4.1 to 4.4, 4.7 to 4.11, 4.13, 5.1 to 5.9, 6C, 6D, 6E, 7.20 to 7.21, 9.1 to 9.35, 10.1, 10.3, 10.7 to 10.10, and 10.12 to 10.34, and to place on file Items 4.5 to 4.6, 4.12, 4.14 to 4.15, 8.1 to 8.5, 9.37 to 9.39, 10.2, 10.4 to 10.6, 10.11, 10.37 to 10, nope, 10.35 to 10.37. Anyone want to check that? Counselor Mbah.
Can we repeat those?
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Sss.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, those items are approved and placed on file as indicated. And on adjournment, Counselor Mbah.
Aye.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes, please.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes, please.
Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, this council is adjourned.